Good morning. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted via WebEx, an online digital platform, and will be livestreamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. My name is Bruce Mullock, and I will be chairing the hearing. Committee of Adjustment panel members participating via WebEx and who can be seen and heard are Carl Nipfel, Aaron Chang, and Nimrod Salaman. City staff will be assisting us throughout the meeting, including moderating the WebEx platform. Agents, applicants, and other interested parties participating in this virtual hearing have registered in advance. They will be connecting through WebEx using a compatible electronic device. Their participation will be via audio only. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision for an application must submit a written request by email to the general emailed address for the Committee of Adjustment, Toronto and East York District Office. Please include your name, address, and an email address. All Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab notifications and appeal updates will be sent by email only. You may not agree with the decision of the committee. Decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local planning appeal tribunal. Appeal instructions will be set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Hearing procedure. Participants who have registered in advance will be connected to this virtual hearing. They will be muted automatically upon entry. When their item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with his or her presentation if required. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter directly into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be allotted a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are approaching the five-minute time limit. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly and clearly state your name. Please confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. Where required, the applicant or agent will proceed first with the presentation of the application. Then individuals, either in support of or in opposition to the application, will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of speakers after they have completed their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will be unmuted and will have an opportunity to rebut, but only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Now please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have the minutes of the last Committee of Adjustment public hearing been confirmed by members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, members of staff or panel, do you have any interest to declare in any of the items scheduled for this morning?
No, Mr. Chair.
Seeing none. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there requests to withdraw an application?
No, Mr. Chair, there are no... Not that I'm aware of. Maybe somebody today might want to withdraw, but at this point, no.
We will now proceed with our hearing.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have a number of applications that have to be deferred automatically today, but we still require a motion, and I'm wondering if the committee would be okay with dealing with those first, starting with item number 10, 928 Davenport Road. It needs to be deferred today because the notice was sent out incorrectly. The property actually includes 1930 Davenport Road as well. And then there were some questions regarding the description of the proposal. It's a lawful, nonconforming, mixed-use building. I don't know that the notice that was issued clearly identified that. And also, the application is being filed under an agreement of purchase and sale, so all of that information needs to be included. We're working with the applicant to make sure that the notice goes out correctly for the next hearing, which I... We don't have hearing dates for 2021 yet, but it will be within the first two public hearings of 2021.
Thank you for that.
Now, I'm not sure if the agent, Mr. Goldman, is online. Did he not register?
He did register. I just don't see him in the hearing. I can give him a call.
I think that's okay. He's aware of the deferral request. We did ask out the agents to be present for the motions, but... So through you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Committee members, bearing all of that information in mind, does anyone have a motion to propose on application number 10 with respect to a deferral?
Sure, I'll move a motion...
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to...
You go ahead, Carl.
No, I don't care either one. I'll either second or move it, either one.
Okay, I'll move a motion to defer on the application.
I don't care either one. I'll second or move it.
Okay, Mr. Salaman is going to propose a motion.
Yeah, so I'll propose a motion to defer the application and that they be subject to the deferral fee.
Motion to defer by Mr. Salaman. Is there a second to that motion?
I'd second the motion. I'd second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nipfel. Okay, motion to defer. All those in favor? Mr. Salaman, you second or... Mr. Nipfel, very good. Motion is carried, and number 10 is deferred.
Okay, and through you, Mr. Chair, the next item to be deferred automatically is number item 12, 187 and 190... Sorry, 187 and 197 A. Hallam Street. Again, this was due to some need for clarification on the proposal, and there's going to be revised zoning review prepared as well, so that will need to be deferred. And as of yet, I don't believe we have the revised zoning review, so I'm not entirely sure when this will be rescheduled, but it may be within the first quarter of 2021.
Thank you. Okay, we're now considering item number 10.
No, 12.
Pardon me. Number 12, panel members.
12.
Is there a motion on that one with respect to deferral?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to move a motion to defer for item number 12. I'd be happy to move a motion to new circulation fees.
Very good motion by Mr. Nipfel to defer. Second on that motion.
Happy to move a motion to deferral for item number 12, subject to new circulation fees.
Just so you're aware, Mr. Nipfel...
We'll deal with it once we get the motion through.
Yeah, okay.
Seconder?
Second to... Second by Mr. Chang, thank you. Motion to defer on the table. All those in favor, show of hands, please. Mr. Nipfel?
It's okay. Carl, I don't know if you can hear me, but your audio is delayed, and there's also some... It's repeating. You're sort of, we can see you, then we can't see you, so there's something going on with your audio. I believe it's... If you could reset your internet.
Okay, I don't know what the problem is. Okay.
Yeah, so if you can reset and then rejoin. And you have quorum, so if you want to continue, we can continue.
Okay, we shall continue.
Better now?
No, you are still... Oh, there you are.
I don't know what the problem is. Okay. Is that better now?
No, you're...
Is that better?
Nope, you're moving very slowly, and it's sort of glitchy, and we can hear you, but your voice isn't matching your audio. So if you actually disconnect completely and then rejoin...
Okay.
We're going to continue on while you do that. Item number 13 also is going to be... Needs to be deferred. Sorry, I just need to get my notes up here.
Okay, I don't know what the problem is. Okay.
Yeah, so item 13, 91 Lippincott Street. The applicant didn't post their notice of public hearing sign, so that needs to be deferred, and they should be charged the deferral fee. So I'll need a motion from the remaining members.
I'll move a motion to defer the application and that they be subject to the deferral fee.
Motion to defer and fee to apply by Mr. Salaman, second by Mr. Chang. All those in favor, show of hands, please. Motion is carried, and the application is deferred with fee to apply.
Those are the ones that are automatic for the morning session. I understand there is another application, that there may be a deferral request, but I think at this point, we should just proceed to go through the agenda, starting with item 1. And we'll deal with the deferral request because that was not an automatic one. You may want to consider the application today.
Thank you for that, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair.
So we shall return to the order of the agenda in considering the applications. And we still have quorum with three members, so while Mr. Nipfel's technical difficulties are being sorted through, the committee will proceed now. And we go to application number 1, which is 2376 Dundas Street West. And on this application, the committee has before it the following communications. Communications from the applicant, all the packaged materials, copy of plan, survey site plan, floor plans, covering letter from the solicitor, planning rationale, standard capacity and water demand letter prepared by C O L E, a copy of the S P A application plans by Richmond Architects, transportation letter by Lee Consulting, presentation materials again from Calvin Lances, solicitor, received 24 November. There is a staff report from the Director of Community Planning Toronto and East York, received 24 November. And in opposition, we do have the following. James Baxter, Mary Oguristo, Lisa Hotcroft. So moderator, is the applicant with us online?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Tony.
And are those registered to speak in opposition? Are they...
That's correct. Jim Baxter here.
Okay, okay. Okay, then we shall... Good morning, Mr. Baxter.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. We're going to go to the agent first, Tony Volpentesta.
I beg your pardon. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
We do hear you, Tony. Thank you very much. Hear you clearly.
That's wonderful news. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, committee members. If I could ask the committee to pull up my presentation? And I have a 10-slide presentation. That is not it. Thank you very much. And I'll be referring to these slides, and if I could ask the committee to coordinate the display of each slide as I make my way through. My name is Tony Volpentesta. I'm the planning consultant. I appear before you today on behalf of Dunwest Properties Limited, the owner of 2376 Dundas Street West, with respect to a minor variance application to add three additional stories to a purpose-built rental housing building. So the site already has approval for a 24-story rental apartment building with retail at grade. You should be aware of, and, Mr. Chairman, thank you for mentioning the fact that there has been a site plan... An application for site plan approval, which has also been under review by city staff for a considerable amount of time. The benefit of... And the fact that a site plan application was submitted allowed for the thorough review of this application by the planning department. This application does not appear before this committee, it's important to note, in a vacuum. The materials filed allowed for substantive review and comment by the city planning department and other agencies as well. The city planning department, as the chairman has already noted, prepared a report dated November 23rd recommending approval. They recommend a condition to require a cash contribution in the amount of $385,000. That is all being secured under Section 45.9 of the Planning Act. And that, should the committee see fit to approve this application, those funds would be directed to capital improvements to a municipal shelter at 2299 Dundas Street West. I've reviewed that condition with my client, and I advise the committee that they are in agreement with the condition. We also recently filed correspondence to revise a bike... The visitor bike parking variance, and effectively it lessens its impact. As originally filed, the variance requested modifications to both the size and location of the visitor bike parking spaces. As part of the site plan amendment application, all visitor bike parking spaces were moved outdoors, and therefore there was no longer a requirement to vary the location of these spaces. City staff also made the same recommendation and have put forward alternative wording for that variance. That's variance number 3 to the variances that apply to bylaw 43886 as amended. If I could just ask whoever's controlling the share screen, if you could just go to that... There it is, site location. Thank you very much, and I'll be directing you to advance the slides as I make my way through.
Mr. Volpentesta, I just need to let you know that we are on a time limit here. So you've used three minutes now of your five minutes. I just give that to you for your information.
Okay, I could be very quick. I'm going to paraphrase what I was going to say about site location. I think, if you're a city of Toronto resident, the big point for site location is that this basically is a mobility hub as defined by Metro Links. It enjoys the fact that it has the Bluer Up Express Station, the Bluer Go Station, and of course the Dundas West Subway Station directly across the street. It's an excellent location to construct transit-oriented rental housing, which is strongly supported by both city and provincial policy objectives. Next slide, please. This is the height map that appeared in the original approval back in 2014. There was a site-specific bylaw that governs and regulates height of a podium building at eight stories and a tower at 24 stories. Substantively, the variances deal with the tower itself to add three additional stories. If you can go to the next slide, please. I think I'll skip this as well. In light of the time, I'm going to go right to variances 1 to 6. These... We appear before you today seeking 10 variances, but the quantum does not reflect the simplicity of the changes. Variances 1 to 6 are all related to the increase in height from 24 to 27 stories. Essentially, a new building envelope map will be appended to the bylaw, and the variances correct the references in the text. The changes between what is permitted and what is proposed are shown on your screen. The purple lines indicate the permitted height and the mechanical penthouse height, and the blue indicates what is being proposed. One of the variances is required to permit a two-meter projection for parapets, whereas the bylaw permits a two-meter projection for guardrails. Next slide, please. Effectively, and we've read the letters of the objectors, the proposed additional height, the three additional floors, has been assessed thoroughly. And the, in our opinion, in my opinion, the additional height will provide for additional rental housing in a transit-rich area without resulting in any unacceptable built format impacts that include shadow impacts. The tower is located at the rear of the site, well separated from the street. The additional tower height will barely be perceptible from the public realm. In terms of shadowing impact, the additional stories will cast minimal additional shadows. Next slide, please. I could just go through this quickly. This slide simply references the additional G F A and the additional density in terms of F S I. Next slide, please. This talks about the ground floor retail space at grade, so we're effectively asking for an increase. The bylaw limits 400 square meters. We're asking for an increase to 566 square meters. That will provide the owner with some additional flexibility to assist in terms of the renting of that space. Next slide, please.
Mr. Volpentesta, I'm afraid I have to stop you. I've allowed you a minute plus extra, so I'm going to have to stop you at that juncture.
Thank you.
And thank you. Standby, please. We'll go now to those registered to speak to the application.
Mr. Baxter?
Hello, can you hear me?
We do hear you, Mr. Baxter. Please state your name, please.
Jim Baxter. I'm a 29-year resident of this area. This is my home. Since the time I've moved in, there's been conversation with the various owners about how high the buildings could be. Six years ago, we made a very generous concession to allow them to build to 72 meters for the east tower, and I believe it's 12 stories on the street tower. And this was after considering the impacts of the sun angle study. Unless the angle of the sun has changed significantly in the last six years, I see no reason to allow them to go any higher. And in fact, not only are they proposing they go higher, but apparently they want to replace the railing with a parapet wall, which is opaque. So I don't see this variance as minor. Any additional height will block the sun, just as it did six years ago. It's not a request to put three stories on 24. It's basically renegotiating the provision that we made, we, the residents of this neighborhood, in good faith. Now we have an avenue study that was brought... That was done because of this building and because of Giraffe. So if they want to renegotiate the height of the building, perhaps we should go back to five to six stories. I don't think they want to do that, but... 12 stories is what the avenue study allows for the actual intersection of Bluer and Dundas. So they've got that on the west tower, and well in excess of that on the east tower. The proposal is not desirable for the appropriate development. The west bend, since being cursed with being labeled the second-best community in which to live in Toronto, has been inundated by developers wanting to throw up mid-rise condos and high-rises. I've lost track of how many tower developments similar to this proposal have gone up or in various application stages. There are, I think, four mid-rises within a short walk of this property, and several other condos that have been approved or close to being approved. None of these developments adequately addressed the fact that the T T C subway system is already at capacity. Personally, I've gone to try and take the subway going east at 9 o'clock in the morning. The trains arrive full. Nobody can get on. I've been told that it's best to go west, several stops, so you can get on, so you can not even get a seat, but at least get on the train. The schools are already full. Currently, area children are being bused north of our district. The traffic congestion during the day and night is getting ridiculous. The last east-west road, Bluer Street, now has bike lanes and has slowed to a crawl. I've noticed, listening to fire truck sirens, that they are not moving. So with the existing number of residents and what they've done to Bluer, traffic is down to a crawl, and I think this is negatively impacting our safety as far as getting fire trucks and ambulances around. The general interest and purpose of this zoning code or bylaw are not maintained. Several years ago, the city invested our tax money to undertake an avenue study of Dundas and Bluer, including this property. In recognition of the provincial push to intensify, the intersection of Dundas and Bluer was determined to have a limit of 12 stories. This property is not on one of the four corners of Dundas, and therefore it should be limited to the five or six stories. If they want to renegotiate. The density and height of this building should not be allowed to negatively impact the west bend as long as our long-established low-density residential neighborhood. The general intent and purpose of the official plan are not maintained. The official plan is intended to protect established neighborhoods from developers and their overdevelopment. Greed is their only motivation. They have no longer... They have no long-term investment in our neighborhood. The owners of this property were given major concessions on the height of the two towers six years ago. If the owners feel they would like to renegotiate, perhaps the height should be reduced. Please reject this application for additional height and density. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Panel members, are there questions of the speaker? There's... Yes? Nimrod, we just have to get audio for you.
Sorry. My question is, what is the impact of the additional three stories and 31 residential units?
Okay. There are six or more developments already approved that haven't been occupied. The transit system is already seems to be at capacity. I think Mr. Perks will agree with this. So adding three more stories will add that many more people trying to use the subway system, which is already full, and this is without well over a dozen buildings that are being built that haven't got people in yet. In addition, three stories is roughly 30 feet plus another two meters for a parapet wall. Even the parapet wall is blocking sun. The people on the west side of Dundas and the streets that run west off of Dundas, they're all going to be in more shadow. The concessions were made to give them the height six years ago, and that was after reviewing the sun angle study. So anything higher, even if they kept the building at 24 floors and made the railing into a parapet wall, is affecting the amount of sun that these people get. It's negatively impacting their lives.
Thank you. I have a question for you, Mr. Baxter.
Yes.
I took note of the comment you made with respect to six years ago.
Yes.
That negotiation discussion that you referred to, that was with respect to this specific development. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
And you say that it was negotiated at 24, which I understand. Can you tell us, you know, what was the nature of that? Was this hard fought over a long time? I mean, just give us a sense of the flavor of that negotiation six years ago, please.
Like I said, I've been here 29 years. The negotiation on this site has happened since beginning before I moved in. It came to a head about seven years ago, and six years ago, we came to a resolution allowing, after the study of the sun angles, that this was as high as they could go without really negatively affecting the sun exposure to these residents on the west side of Dundas and the streets moving in, such as Edna is more affected by crossways, but Chelsea, even as far up as Glenlake Road. So any addition to the height goes beyond what we agreed to six years ago.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Any other questions for the speaker, panel members? Very good. Thank you very much. Let's return to the applicant, please.
Mr. Chairman, thanks for an opportunity to respond to some of those comments. First of all, I'd like to correct the misconception about shadow studies. It's not blocking sun or sun exposure. The test before this committee and the test in terms of impact deals with impacts on the creation of net new shadows on designated neighborhoods. The test is, in terms of that impact, deals with generating no adverse impact. The study that was filed, the shadow study that was filed with this application was carefully reviewed. When you look at the shadow study and in terms of its additional impact in the equinoxes, the March-September equinoxes, there's minimal additional shadow impact in the early morning hours on designated neighborhoods. If I could direct you to the second page of the Planning Department report, and I quote, "The sun shadow study submitted in support of the site plan amendment application indicates that net new shadows cast from three-story addition on properties designated neighborhoods are minimal during the spring and fall equinoxes." And they also looked at, the staff basically concluded that they are satisfied that the impacts of the proposed addition are minor relative to the billing envelope approved by the OMB in 2014. I'd also like to correct another misconception about the study and the avenues or building along avenues. I have to remind the committee that that particular study and analysis technically doesn't apply to this property. Secondly, in terms of meeting the intent of a building that would be characterized as an avenue or mid-rise building, this proposal achieves that through the delivery of an eight-story building along Dundas. The tower, as is evident in the site plan, is well set back from Dundas. It's as far east on the site as can be accommodated. I would also like to counter the claim that, you know, this is the developer that's basically gonna disappear from the area as a result of this proposal. Just reminding the committee that this building is a purpose-built rental building. 31 additional units would be secured. And the fact that it is a rental building with ground floor retail actually points to the fact that there's significant long-term investment by this applicant, and they won't disappear overnight. So the, every developer, every landowner in the city has the ability and the right to file a minor variance application. In terms of how things are assessed, you have to assess them factually based on the materials filed, and you have to look carefully at the official plan in terms of judging the level of impact. There's certainly a level of discretion in terms of how official plan policies are interpreted. In this case, and again, because the site plan application allowed this application to be carefully and thoroughly assessed, it was the opinion of the City Planning Department that the three additional stories being sought does not rise to the level that it creates unacceptable impacts. Those are my remarks. I'd be glad to answer any questions that arise. Thank you.
Thank you. Panel members, questions of the applicant? I have one, Mr. Volpintest, and that would be this. Let me ask you, were you a party to those discussions referenced by the speaker in opposition that took place six years ago?
Mr. Chairman, I was not privy to those discussions.
That's fine, but I'm sure you're aware of whatever that decision was at that time. So could you give us your take on that? My concern here is that the residents appear to have felt that they had a deal on this, something they could rely on. And so hence their concern. So what was your take on the discussions, having reviewed it, I am certain, of what took place six years ago?
My take on it, Mr. Chairman, through you and through the rest of the committee, is there is a perception that when an accommodation is made and a site-specific bylaw is agreed to, that application before the Planning Department at the time resulted in a contested hearing at the OMB. So the notion that there was some agreement or some assurance, I think, is misleading. Certainly, the achievement of a level of approval, whether it's at LPAT or TLAB, may, to the layperson, signal that there was some agreement. But usually agreements speak to matters that were the subject of a settlement, for example, where parties basically align and they land on an agreed, say, in this case, it would be height in particular. That wasn't the case back in 2014. It was a contested hearing. Secondly, the nature and the quantum of the increase was carefully studied. It was part of the application. And I don't want to make this all about impact on the neighborhood and the submissions you've heard. There was also careful consideration, if you swing your shadow study and you look well east of the site, on impact on Perth Parquet, which actually rises to a greater level of importance. So we, on balance, the 2014 approval was the result of a contested hearing. That contested hearing led to a site-specific bylaw that is the subject of the vast majority of the variances before you today. The right of asking for those additional variances has to be carefully assessed. It has to be evaluated by this committee in terms of the criteria and the four tests before you. I would direct your attention again to the nature of the Planning Department report. And I would also highlight the fact that the quantum, the additional stories being asked, again, does not trigger or does not cross the line in terms of creating an adverse impact.
Thank you very much. My final question to you is quite simple. With respect to bike spaces, bike parking spaces, how many bike parking spaces were involved in the original proposal? And how many bike parking spaces will result from the minor variance requested? Is it a net gain or loss of bike parking spaces, please?
Well, Mr. Chairman, again, through you to the rest of the committee, the variance being sought today is basically in the physical dimensions of the visitor biking, bike parking spaces. It's not the, the number is not a matter before the committee today. It's the physical dimension of the stalls themselves. I don't have the previous bike parking spaces readily at hand. I could perhaps get that for you.
I'll rephrase my question. I'll rephrase my question then. Does the size then, the dimensions, does that increase or decrease? I'm sorry, just without my referring to the application, it's decreasing, I assume?
It is, but I've just been advised by a member of my team that the overall bike parking space allotment is actually a significant gain as a result of this application.
Thank you very much. That's all. Any final questions, panel members of the applicant? Very good then. At this stage then, we'll take the, take the application into committee for a discussion if there is some or a motion if someone is ready to make a motion, panel members?
I could just...
Mr. Chairman, can you? Are you able to hear me, Mr. Chairman?
We're able to hear you, Mr. Nipfel, but we can't see you. I think you're probably delayed again. And Mr. Solomon?
Okay, I...
Can we hear you now? Go ahead.
You can hear me now? I, I appreciate that there are a lot of variances before us, but are a lot of variances in his question. The issues before Solomon in his question are simple. Height, some additional units, and an adjustment to the size of bike spaces. Some of the size of bike, additional, you know, these is. The department that the impacts are minimal. We are no... Extremely minor impacts are minimal. I see that there is as far removed from, as far removed from existing development as possible. Well, there isn't to the city. There is also an increase in bike. The price of that is a slightly higher tower, which I would argue in agreement, again, with the applicant, that it's imperceptible from the public realm. I frankly feel that this application, I feel that I support it. Unless my colleagues have other questions that they'd like to raise, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve by Mr. Nipfel. Is there a second to that motion?
Just if I can add to that motion...
Mr. Chairman, sorry, the motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that motion that there are...
Yes.
There is a motion put forward now on the table by Mr. Nipfel to approve.
Subject to, subject to the planning conditions.
Thank you. Subject to the planning conditions. Important, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Cheng.
Yeah, I agree with Calhoun.
All right then. Motion on the table to approve, subject to planning conditions. Show of hands, please, all those in favor. The motion is carried and the application is approved unanimously, subject to planning conditions. Thank you. And committee moves on now to application number two. On this application, committee has before it the following materials. Materials submitted by the applicant, planning rationale prepared by Booze Fields, parking justification prepared, Lee Consulting. There is commenting report from Transportation Services and a staff report from Community Planning. We do have a letter recommending conditional approval from Councillor Balaio. In opposition, there are one, two, three, four, five. I may have this number wrong, that there is substantial opposition in the order of something between 12 and 15 persons, all of whose names and addresses appear on the materials here, so. Mr. Moderator, is the applicant with us?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Sasha Lozon is on the line.
Okay. All right then. Good morning. Sasha.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We do hear you. Please state your name.
Hi, Mr. Chair and members of committee. My name is Sasha Lozon.
You have five minutes to make your presentation to the committee. Please carry on.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Sasha Lozon. I'm a senior associate at Beaus Fields. I'm the planning consultant for the owner in respect to this property. I'd like to note that my client and their consulting team have worked closely with planning staff for many months on this application. As well, I'd like to note that there was a site plan application that was filed and has been reviewed by the city, so this application has been looked at in detail. Planning staff have reviewed the requested variances and have no objections and have submitted a letter to the committee as such. The client has also met with Councillor Anna Balaio, who is supportive and has not expressed any objections. We note that there was a letter filed by the council's office with two conditions, and my client is okay with those conditions. The proposed building is comprised of two distinct built form elements. A 12-story mixed-use element on the southern portion of the site, fronting St. Clair Avenue, and a four-story-plus residential element on the northerly portion of the site with live-work units at Grade, fronting Alberta Avenue. One complexity of the site is that it is split-zoned, and therefore variances relate to either the front or the rear portion of the building, not the entire site. Given the site is governed by several current and former zoning bylaws, multiple variances are requested to permit the proposed development. However, many of the variances are essentially duplicates under more than one bylaw. The variances generally fall into four categories: height density, massing, parking loading, and landscape. The variances are largely technical in nature. In my opinion, the requested variances, both individually and cumulatively, meet all four tests under Section 45.1 of the Planning Act, as detailed in the Minor Variance Application cover letter that was submitted. As such, we request that the Committee of Adjustment approve the application. And perhaps I'll just note that we have reviewed the objection letters, and the vast majority of the comments, I would say, are misunderstood in terms of the variances. I don't think it's understood by the general community that a large portion of these variances, they essentially just relate to a portion of the site and not the entire site. So although the variances may be required for a portion of the site, the zoning bylaw is still maintained for the overall site itself. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you very much. Panel members, questions now? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Solomon.
Okay. My first question is to the applicant. What was the level of community consultation that was undertaken?
In terms of community consultation itself, I believe it was largely through planning staff. The community members were, would send questions to planning staff, and planning staff would then respond and ask us any clarifications, and it would essentially was through planning staff themselves.
So I noticed there were some questions in the letters that we got in terms of the landscape strip at the rear adjacent to the residential properties and the issue of fencing. And is that something you can then just go over so I can better understand that?
Sure, no problem. So in terms of the landscape strip, so the bylaw requires a 1.5-meter-wide landscape strip, soft landscaping along the sort of westerly portion of the lot, the rear portion of the property. So along that strip, I'd just like to note that essentially if you refer to the ground floor plan, which you may or may not have in front of you, but essentially the 1.5-meter strip is maintained at the southerly portion and essentially is maintained for approximately half of the, along the west lot line. And then beyond that, it sort of slowly gets narrower as you move further north. And at the most northerly extent is where you have that 0.5 meter, the most, the sort of minimal dimension. But it's not that that 0.5 meters is proposed for the entire length. It's actually just a portion of the length. And the, I'd just like to note that the city staff report does sort of address that and acknowledges that.
And so I'm just looking then, there is, it looks like there's one, two, three, four properties or so that are affected by that reduced landscape strip dimension?
That appears to be correct, yes.
And so is there a reason why you can't provide the 1.5-meter landscape strip?
So my understanding is that the lot line essentially is not perpendicular to the building itself, so that sort of results in the slightly narrowing of the strip.
And so what kind of landscaping can you actually put within that 0.5-meter dimension? I mean, can you put large-scale trees on, that would survive in that limited amount of space?
No, you definitely could not as well. There's sort of a proposed retaining wall within a portion of that. So there's not any landscaping that would sort of be, that would be helpful within that small area.
But wasn't that, isn't that the intention of having in the zoning that 1.5-meter landscape strip? So that, in fact, it does provide a large enough area to provide a landscape, a strong landscape buffer to adjacent residential properties?
I mean, as mentioned, for the large majority, or for at least half of the westerly lot line, the full 1.5 is provided. It's simply just, in terms of geometry, the building relative... simply just, uh, in terms of geometry, uh, the building relative to the, um, lot line, and, and so it, it reduces slightly, but, uh, in terms of impact, uh, there's a negligible impact, um, relative to the, the proposal.
And my, my last question relates then to the fencing and the wall, the retaining wall, if you can just explain what exactly is happening?
Sure, so for the, um, the existing, uh, there are existing fences, um, that are, uh, for the rear properties of those adjacent lots, and, um, as mentioned, there's a retaining wall that is, uh, proposed to be along that portion of the, the lot line. Um, it sort of, it, it varies in height, but essentially it's one-point-seven meters and then reduces to about one-point-four, and then at the northerly end reduces to about one-point-one. Um, that, we didn't, we didn't, um, see a need necessarily to put a fence between existing fences and the retaining wall. Um, we felt that, you know, the retaining wall is of substantial height, and that, that there would just sort of create this space to catch garbage, et cetera. Um, as well, there is a fair amount of, um, the number of trees back there, and if there was a, a fence to be put in there, you know, it, it likely would require some of those trees to be, uh, removed in order to put that fence, so, um, it's, you know, on, on balance, we felt that probably the fence wasn't, uh, required.
Further questions of the applicant, shall we move-
I have one additional question.
Go ahead.
I have one additional question.
Go ahead, please.
Um, picking up on Mr. Solomon's question, um, uh, the reduction of the landscape strip, as you indicated, you can place landscaping in the five, uh, meter section, the, the regular section, I should say, um, but where it's reduced, you indicated that you can't accommodate any land, so what are you, are you providing in the way of a buffer in that area where there is the reduced strip?
It would be a soft landscape buffer that's required, so it would, it's just soft landscaping, um, and essentially, uh, a retaining wall on portion, a portion, one side, and then the existing fences on the other. It's, it's just a soft-
So in other words, you mean, you mean, you mean grass?
I believe that that's what-
Nothing that's very- So in fact, it isn't providing any kind of a visual barrier? So the, the barrier you're relying upon, the barrier you're relying upon is the fencing that the existing owners already have on their property?
As well as the retaining wall, and the existing, uh, there's a, a fair number of existing trees, quite a lot of, of current existing vegetation within there, that would also, uh, contribute to, um, any sort of buffer.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move then to those registered to speak in opposition.
Mr. Moderator? Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, Curtis Harris, who registered, uh, emailed us this morning and said that he couldn't attend, and Igor Cooperman, um, did not respond to a phone call to join the hearing and was not in the hearing this morning, so we'll move past Igor. The first up is Deana Mandell.
Good morning.
Hi, can you, good morning, can you hear me?
We do hear you, please state your name.
Deana Mandell.
Thank you. You have five minutes.
I live at thirteen A Robina, I'm an original owner of that, of a home that will back right on to this building. Um, what I, I, I'm worried about parking, we already have very limited parking, um, and there are not, uh, as, we think there is not a sufficient number of parking spaces, uh, planned for this building, so that, uh, conditions for parking on the street are going to be a lot worse, and we find we already have problems. I'm worried about, uh, people looking straight into our backyards, this building is abutting very closely on our properties. Um, we all feel that there was insufficient consultation with the community, um, because this came as quite a surprise to us, and, uh, we, we feel that, uh, while the, the application may refer to many of these variances as having negligible effect, from our position as homeowners, abutting this property, it's not negligible at all. Our gardens will change, our sense of enjoyment of our, of our, our backyards will change, um, and the parking will change. The value of our properties will go down. Uh, I think there's no question about that, because it used to feel like we had a little oasis in the city, and that's going to vanish. So I think that a little perspective is required when the decision is made about whether these are minor variances with negligible effect or not. Well, there was a plan made, I think eleven years ago, in, in the study, the St. Clair study, and, uh, we as residents want that plan adhered to as closely as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May I ask you a question, please?
Of course.
Could you tell us, you, you referred to the consultation being, I think you said it was lacking, what consultation did you, uh, participate in, or did you, uh, or were you made aware of?
We did receive a letter or two, I, I think that, I'm not so clear on this, I know there were other, uh, residents who were more involved, who said that the, the announcement of this came as a surprise to them, and that they checked with, um, Anna Bilo's office, and were told that the consultation had been, uh, less than, uh, fulsome, I would say. But I, since I wasn't involved in that conversation, I, I can't speak to it exactly.
Thank you.
I can try to find a report on it, if you like.
Thank you very much, that, that'll be fine. Okay, next speaker, please.
We have, uh, Michael Nowman.
Good morning. Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we do, please state your name.
Michael Nowman.
Michael, tell us, please, about the impact this, uh, development would have on, on your enjoyment of your property, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Uh, I live a couple doors down from Deana Mandell, who just spoke, and I agree with everything that she has just stated, for sure. There was absolutely no community consult at all, except for the letter that came in, and, uh, you know, showed that the property, sorry, that the, uh, development was planned to be built so close to the back of our lots. Um, it's very close, it's going very high, uh, it would block out our view to the east completely. Instead of seeing the city, we'd be seeing a brick wall, balconies, people staring back at us very closely. Um, the portion of, I, I guess with, with the fence, it doesn't make sense to me that, that the builder doesn't want to build a fence. Um, I think it should be built as high as it could possibly go, um, for privacy. Um, seven of the eight neighbors, all in a row here on Robina, are strongly against this proposal, uh, based on how close it is, um, right to our yard. Um, property values certainly would go down. Um, the backyard is sort of an oasis, it, it's, it's an escape from the city, St. Clair is very busy, it's getting busier, and building this development so close to us, so high, is an infringement on our enjoyment, and it'll affect our everyday life and our children's. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Questions of the speaker, committee? Next speaker, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I was mistaken, Igor Cooperman is in the hearing, someone we can now-
I'm on the, yeah, I'm on the phone, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we do, please, state your name.
Good, yeah, uh, 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 just, just one sec, can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, good. Yeah, good. I'm sorry, yeah. So my name is Igor Cooperman, and I'm from fifteen B Robina, here, uh, Robina Avenue, and I've been living here since the beginning, since the, you know, those buildings were built in two thousand, uh, so obviously, you know, uh, I will start with, with Mr. Solomon, and his, and his question, at last, last on, and the question of Mr. Solomon was, what was the level of community, uh, consultation before? Uh, the level was zero, absolutely zero, we haven't heard anything, un, unless, until, as you did, and I'm thankful to my neighbors that they brought my attention to this. Uh, uh, we're luckily, we have the people, uh, here who are very, uh, I guess, fluent in, in this, in these things, and I'm talking about the people from Robina, and the people from Winona, who wrote the opposition, uh, like, little, a few, few submissions of, of opposition. And, uh, in this, from what I understand, uh, I mean, uh, they found about dozens and dozens of violations, of which were mentioned in the submission of the, uh, of the, uh, company which will build this condo. And, uh, if you, if you, if you look at these submissions, so, like, one of two things, all these people are, do not, did not read the laws and bylaws and the rules of the building, they try to circumvent all these things, and, uh, eventually trick the owners. I think there's nothing in the middle, and I think this is pretty bad, let me put it this way. As my neighbor Mike already mentioned, the, uh, how, the, the proposed building will completely block us from anything, so we're gonna, we already have the big building, twenty, twenty-floor building on the west, so now we're gonna be, have the building right in our backyard, and there's twelve-story building which is planned on, on St. Clair, on the south. So we are in s, kind of a chamber, and, uh, I'm not even talking about the shading and everything, so, but basically, every day, instead of seeing sun, sunrise, I'll see the high-rise, and about hundred, uh, people which will live in this house will tell me hello every morning, so our privacy will be definitely, like, gone, uh, our, uh, you know, the, the value of the house will be decreased substantially. Uh, now, also, I, I can also tell you, and I know I have only five minutes here, and, uh, so, but, there's a thing, like, uh, there's a house, there's a condo building across the road of Alberta from us, and, uh, and they were building, like, you know, they were putting the foundation, and they were, uh, like, putting, like, special machines here, so I think, and my, my, uh, neighbors will, uh, will, I think, will join me, but the, our, our houses were shaking this past summer, just like shaking, and then, and basically shivering from this thing. So it's like, my concern is that our house basically will not, besides privacy and everything, will not withstand all these buildings, and after all this construction. And if you see what happens a month ago, just a month ago, on the, on the intersection of Agleton and Brancliff, and you can see this in the articles, the pictures, it's exactly what happened, the hillside of the, uh, of the, of their backyard. So, and, uh, they just started, just a little bit started, the, the, the construction of LTR, and the, the, the backyard, like, the, the ground slid, it was slid there, so, the, the, not only the building of this, of this condo will affect our privacy and, and the shading, and, and the decrease of the house, it's, it's a danger to us. I mean, I understand that the members of the committee, the busy people, if just one of you will take time to come here one day and just sit on the place where this house, uh, this, this condo is planned to build, and look, and, and just, I think we'll be very clear, that this should not happening at all, because this is like, this is violation of everything which possibly could be violated. Uh, and finishing my speech, I would like to ask the, um, uh, the chairman and the members of the committee to update us on everything which is gonna happen after this meeting, because until this day, I'll, I'll finish where, where I started, until this day, we have zero, uh, zero, uh, communication, zero, like, zero, basically zero. Yes, we might have had probably like some letters in the junk mail, uh, which we had, but nothing else. So this still building should not be built without our consent, and it should not be built at all.
Thank you very much, your time is up.
Yes, I'm-
Other questions, are there questions for Mr. Cooperman, panel members? No. Thank you, let's move on then, is there a further speaker, Mr. Moderator?
Uh, the last speaker is Lee Adamson.
Good morning.
Oh, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we do, please.
Oh, good.
Please state your name.
All right, my name is Lee Adamson, and I live at two-eighteen Winona Drive, uh, just around the corner from the development. Um, and I agree with the other speakers that, uh, this letter with a huge, multi-page, um, document full of, uh, variances came as a big surprise in the mail. I think we had an open house a couple of years ago, um, at Oakwood Collegiate, and they spoke in vague terms about their plans for this site, but it was really about, uh, the other building that they spoke of that's on St. Clair and Alberta. Um, and I don't remember any, anything coming in the mail or any information, and I do look for this type of thing. So when this came in, um, uh, me and our neighbors were quite shocked to see at how many variances were being requested. Um, and in particular, in terms of how it affects our life, um, in the neigh, as neighbors on Winona, we were particularly concerned with, uh, the shortage of parking spaces. Um, it is, as they, our other neighbors said, is a big problem in our area already. Uh, there's quite a few condo buildings going up in our neighborhood, and, um, so it's a big concern, um, parking, so there's, uh, ninety-nine required spaces and only fifty-eight proposed. You know, it's just a little over half of what was requested, so that seems pretty huge, not a minor, um, variance at all. Uh, the bike parking, um, is also completely inadequate. Um, there's no occupant, uh, bike parking in a secure room, there's, the spaces seem very small, I don't know stack, I don't really understand, but they don't sound very convenient, they're not near a pedestrian, uh, entrance, they're not even on the same street level, so the bike parking is completely inadequate, and, as you are all aware, um, active transportation is being encouraged by Transform TO to make it a more, um, to reduce the carbon intensity of the city, so having, encouraging people to bike, having good bark, bike convenience, safe bike parking, I think it should be a priority in this day and age. Um, and also, there are seem to be big reductions in the width of the sidewalks, as far as I could understand it, we're very concerned about that again, because the sidewalks are already narrow in our neighborhood, and that's where things like bike parking and, um, landscaping and so forth, you need, and people, uh, walking need, need that space. So it said it was going to reduce it from four-and-a-half meters to the curb line to, um, three-point-seven meters, which is an eighteen percent reduction. Um, we were also concerned about reductions in the landscape width, which the, has been dealt with, uh, at the back of the property. There's also a big reduction in the outdoor amenity space, which, um, could be rooftop gardens, which could help to, uh, beautify the building, and that is also drastically reduced, um, in the proposal. So we were, um, and then overall, all of this other variances are basically, they're trying to, um, you know, fit a too-big building onto a too-small site, so there's sort of twelve percent increases in floor area and so forth, so, um, but overall, I would say, in terms of impact on us on Winona, our biggest concerns related to the bicycle, uh, spaces, the sidewalks, and, and the parking, and the landscaping.
Thank you very much. Questions, panel members? Thank you very much, okay, then we shall return now to the applicant, and the applicant, I will, you'll have five minutes to address issues raised by those speaking. These relate to bicycle parking, soft landscaping, um, impact on property value, you might comment on that? No? And consultation, because- And consultation, because one comment that I have heard throughout is that this was a surprise. So those are the things, if you could, we'd like to hear about, please.
Thank you. Okay, so just to, perhaps I'll start with some of the items that were most recently mentioned. As I mentioned at the outset, I think there's some confusion in terms of the variances applying to a portion of the lot, either the front or the back, and not the entire site. So for instance, in terms of amenity space, there is a variance requested. However, there's also amenity space provided on the other portion of the lot. And therefore, the total amount of amenity space is actually exceeds what the bylaw requirement would be. So the variance essentially is only for a portion of the site. So there will be a significant amount of amenity space, which would exceed typical bylaw requirements. With the comment in terms of the width of the sidewalk, I'd just like to note that the bylaw requires 4.5 meters. The proposal at grade is not proposing to reduce the sidewalk width. In fact, we're proposing 4.5 to 4.8 meters. The 3.7 meters is reference to a portion of the building that is higher up. So it's above grade. So the sidewalk itself is not being proposed to be reduced. It is 4.5 to 4.8, so it will meet that criteria. In terms of the parking, it was mentioned something about 58 parking spaces proposed. Again, the parking variance only relates to a portion of the site, the front portion only. So there are additional parking spaces that are on the rear portion of the site. And therefore, overall, the parking is more than what was indicated. The report from Lee that was put in will sort of provide the rationale for the parking. Transportation staff have reviewed this application and have signed off and are satisfied with the overall parking provided. In terms of the bicycle parking, again, the variance is relating to simply the dimension of the parking spaces as a stacker is needed. Therefore, some of the dimensions are reduced. However, the overall bicycle parking exceeds the bylaw requirement. It's not proposing to reduce the number of bicycle parking spaces. Because there are four bylaws essentially that apply to this site, that sort of contributes to the number of variances. But as I said at the outset, there's a number of duplicates. In terms of privacy, essentially at the rear portion, there are narrow windows that are up high that allow for light in, but not to be able to see out. The only windows, there are, I believe, windows from four units that do face that direction. However, the majority of the windows are essentially narrow ones that are up high and wouldn't allow to see out. As well, the as-of-right, I'd just like to remind everyone that the as-of-right building is for 12 stories on this property. So the comments in terms of the building being too tall or may block views, there is the as-of-right for this 12 stories. So it's essentially just these technical variances to allow for the proposal. The rear portion is actually, doesn't require any height variance. And therefore, is actually lower than what would be permitted in the bylaw. In terms of the building being close to these rear yards, we aren't proposing any setback variances. The setbacks are as permitted. The windows on the front portion of the property are well set back from the lot line. And as I said, on the rear, it's the sort of narrow windows up tall, up high. And in terms of, I'm just trying to see if there's anything else I didn't cover off. Those are my main point. Consultation, I wasn't, I wasn't involved in the consultation myself, so I don't know the particulars. All I know is that there was some discussions and mostly, I believe, through planning staff.
Thank you. Panel members, questions for the applicant, please? Seeing none, committee will take the application into committee for possible discussion and for a motion. Panel members? Is there a motion or any comments on the application?
I do have some comments. I do have concerns that there are just so many variances that are being proposed. And I also have concerns with the landscape strip variance, reducing it from 1.5 meters down to 0.5.
If I might weigh in as well, Mr. Chairman. I have difficulty with variance number six and variance number seven that are before us. It seems to me that the implication, or the effect of the development on the residential properties that are immediately adjacent is really quite substantial. They face a major driveway, the major driveway services, a substantial amount of parking. And the bylaw very clearly requires a fence and a 1.5 meter landscape strip. And granted, as the applicant has indicated, it doesn't apply to the entire property limit, but for a portion of the property limit, neither of those is being provided. And I just don't think that that leads to a reasonable integration between the new and the existing development. So I personally am not going to be supporting variances number six and seven because of those reasons.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
I agree with what Carl just said. The overall development makes sense to me. But it's just that the way the existing law, the relationship with the law and the neighborhood kind of created this very tense relationship at the back. And it looks like the, I mean, we can tell the application right now is trying to maximize its buildable area, which is fine. But I think they have to respect and respond to what the neighbors are asking for. At least some privacy for them would be helpful. So I think I agree with Carl that overall is agreeable. But these two variances will have very negative impact to the neighbors.
Thank you. I'll offer my own comment. I agree with Carl's analysis of variances number six and seven. Overall, I think it's important to look at the application in terms of the fact that as-of-right, 44 meters is permitted. And the variance is asking for 44.95, I believe. So it's quite minor in terms of the height variance involved. And just a general concern, that the consultation, in my mind, clearly appears to have been deficient and could have been done in such a way as to draw the neighbors into the discussion earlier and perhaps to have avoided some of this concern. But those are my thoughts on the application. I look then to panel members for a motion, please.
If I can just add to that comment, in terms of the landscape strip, there was, because there are so many variances. If you go further down, variance number eight also deals with the 1.5 meter landscape strip. I don't know if you see that, section nine, bracket A, site-specific bylaw 1103-2009. So I'm not sure where, how many of the variances deal with that landscape strip issue.
I see it, yeah.
So I would flag that one as well, in addition to the one that-
And panel members, I caution you, if we are looking at perhaps deletion of specific, we have repetition of numbers here, so we really need to be careful.
You're not deleting anything, you're just commenting on-
Okay. I think we're expressing concern about some different variances. And so it looks to me like, because of the numbering on these, just be aware of which ones you're looking at, because the numbers do repeat.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to caution the members, if you're looking, picking the variances apart, that perhaps in this instance, it's best to look at it as a package deal. Each variance may impact some other component of the development.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, we do hear you, Mr. Niffel. Carry on.
I appreciate the concern in cherry picking variances. I indicated my concern, and my concern has to do with the relationship of the development to the properties on the west side. I think it's dangerous for us to recommend approval of an application with trying to cherry pick the variances relative to the buffer zones and so forth. Because as my colleague has indicated, it's referenced in two or three places. I'm unable to support the application totally. I, my major concern has to do with the relationship of the properties to the west. I suspect that the only options, if I, I suspect that me, with, to meet my objective, would be to reject the application, to bring forth a motion that it be denied, or to defer it. I'm not sure that a deferral is going to be helpful here. So I'm going to bring forward a motion that the application be denied.
Motion to refuse by Mr. Niffel. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Salomon. Motion to refuse then before the committee. Show of hands, please, all those in favor.
Through you.
The motion is carried and the, sorry?
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair. Would the members be, wish to expand on the reasons for the deferral? Just so that it is, it's clear? In that the last would be, it's not minor in particular or with respect to the impact on the west adjacent residential properties?
But the motion was just to reject the application, not to defer it?
No, I understand. But would you like to elaborate on the reasons?
Oh, yes, yeah. The reason for the motion that I put forward is because of the negative impact of the proposed development on the properties immediately to the west and the lack of a provision of any kind of reasonable buffering between those two developments. Would, is that a sufficient explanation?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, good clarification. And I'm gonna ask to take that vote once again. No? Well, we hadn't, I hadn't actually, I hadn't actually announced it, that on the vote, it was a unanimous vote to carry the motion and thereby to refuse the application. Thank you, panel members. With that, committee moves on to item number 3802, St. Clair Avenue West. And on this application, the committee has before it material submitted by the applicant. There is a planning justification prepared by MB1 Development Consulting. And there's a staff report from Transportation Services. Mr. Moderator, do we have the applicant online?
Yes, dear Mr. Chair, Michael Barton is on the line.
Very good. Good morning.
Good morning. This is Michael Barton speaking.
Good morning, Michael. Okay, I'm going to ask the panel members if they wish a presentation or whether they may have questions for you that won't require a presentation panel. Do you require a presentation on this application? No, they don't?
No. I do have a question if the applicant, I've got a question if the applicant's familiar with the condition of the Transportation Services Department.
Yes, I am.
I have exactly the same question, yeah.
Yes, I am. And I was hoping to have an opportunity to speak to that. So I guess the one concern I have would be the, with the condition, that would actually require additional variances to be approved. If that would reduce the rear yard setback further from what would be approved, that would be one issue. But the main thing was, is that we had submitted a letter asking it the widening not be taken. And we had a few reasons for that. And I think that's with the committee as well. I could go through, I could go through that because that's our main, that's the main concern here, I think, with this application. I did, the transportation report basically is indicating there's no concerns with the variances. That basically, they're asking for the widening of the lane to provide a six meter width. We were, this was mentioned to us, I would say, a couple months ago, in October. But there was no reason given to us. I had asked if this was something where, you know, is there a widening needed for, does the city have plans to come in here and undertake future widenings? Is this an official plan requirement? What's the reason for it? And there wasn't one given at that time. And so when I spoke with the owners, they were concerned that by giving the widening without having a rationale for it, they were gonna have to either lose their parking at the rear of the building or to reduce the expansion of the building. And so based on not receiving any information, I provided the letter dated October 6th, which outlines the reasons why it was my opinion that this widening isn't practical or necessary. I do understand the idea of providing a six meters as a standard. But I think in this situation where you have, most of the buildings on the lane have been built either right up to the existing lane or close, that you wouldn't even be able to construct six meters in width. And there's also, I did mention in the letter that this is a pretty substantial public art location where you have buildings that have featured graffiti art. So I think this is a location where I would be surprised to actually see a widening in future. It does provide the width that is needed for such items as building laneway homes. It's 3.59 meters today. And the city's new requirements for laneway housing seek three and a half. So you, you do have a width even to provide, construct a new laneway home back there. So my concern is that to encumber my client's property with this dedication, which would either, as I mentioned, require variances to provide zero parking at the rear or a reduction in the depth of the addition. It just doesn't make sense when you're looking at an area where you want to see more intense land use, efficiency of land use, increased commercial activity. So we had asked that the widening not be granted. And I did indicate, I had spoke with staff about that. But I understood that we were too close to the hearing to really, you know, have much, much real discussion. But I did confirm with the owners that they want to maintain the building depth. So that puts us in the position of the condition regarding providing parking spaces with minimum length of 5.6 meters. We wouldn't be able to achieve that either. So that-
Thank you very much. I believe you've addressed the question.
Okay.
Are there any further questions of the applicant?
I have one, I have one further question, Mr. Chairman.
Carry on.
The, you mentioned, you mentioned that you weren't given a reason for the lane widening. If you could refer to the transportation report that we have before us, I believe you have it as well. The-
Yes.
The widening that they're requesting is part of the official plan. So there's a fairly substantial reason for it. It's not arbitrary, it's in the official plan. That being said, it would be very difficult, in my view, to go against the official plan and recommend that the widening not take place. So I think, just in fairness to, fairness to the staff, if they haven't told you, please read that report. I gather the recommendation flows from an official plan, request official plan. I personally think it needs to be taken, it needs to be taken quite seriously.
And I would like to respond to that if I could.
Go ahead.
My comment about not being given a reason was that we, so you'll notice that my letter is dated October 6th and the staff report is November 12th. So that was my, so we were asked to give our position before the application moved forward. forward, and that, so we were in a position where I needed to either agree to a widening or not agree to the widening, and then, and to, without being, in that time, we were, I have emails that say that Transportation didn't give the Committee of Adjustment a reason, just that they were requesting it. So it, it put us in an awkward position of, do we just agree to give up land, which would drastically affect the development plan, without really having a reason other than Transportation asking for it, and the practicality of whether the lane would actually ever be widened in future? So with the opportunity, staff does have the opportunity to, to do a right-of-way widening reduction through a review process, but that wasn't, again, we weren't really put in the position of being able to, to discuss that, just based on how it all kind of went through.
I just want to add some comment about this, and, you know, cowgirl of a point, if you want to change or if we want to change this requirement, we are talking about changing the official plan. And based on experience when the OP asks for this kind of laneway widening, six meter is a, is actually a perfect number for two lanes and also for fire trucks. That means there is an intent to intensify this neighborhood. So it might be a 20 years plan, it might be a 30 years plan, that you cannot foresee at this moment. So there are some other planners or planning staff looking into this matter, and they probably haven't got enough time to look at this particular application. So in either way, I would strongly discourage you or the committee to, to go against this technical report. And with that said, I started to wonder if you want to defer this application so that you can clarify with the planning staff and perhaps at the, now, because you don't want to reduce the, the building footprint, right? So the only way to go is, like you said, reduce the parking or eliminate the parking. I don't see that in your variance.
And that, and that's my concern is that, so this is being, this was submitted in February, I understand.
Unfortunately, this committee cannot force the planning staff to generate a report on time, so you're only given two options. Either we approve it, but you have to stick with the technical report, or we will reject it, you go to the T-Lab, or you withdraw or defer and, you know, talk to the staff and see if you should add this parking variance.
Could I add one other point, Mr. Chang? I think it, it flows from the very point that Mr. Solomon's question initiated, which is, I frankly support the transportation report. If we were to approve this application subject to the transportation condition, I, I don't, I don't believe the variances that are before us still stand. I think the variances have to change. And I believe the applicant indicated the same thing. So I don't think an approval subject to the planning or the transportation report condition gets us anywhere. I think the only options here are that the application either be rejected or it, as you've indicated, Mr. Chang, is deferred to allow for these matters to be resolved.
Right, I agree. Yes, that's true.
Okay, then, at this stage, I'm going to ask, I'm going to say that the committee will take the application into committee.
Through you, Mr. Chair, is the applicant amenable to a deferral, or do they believe in this proposal and they're willing to defend it should you decide to refuse through T-Lab? You have to ask the applicant. There's no point in forcing them to go back and talk to Transportation if they're not willing to make the change.
Okay.
Yes, based on reviewing everything and discussing it with the owners, we are seeking a decision today.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll take it into committee, and I look to panel members for a motion, please.
Okay, I will have a motion to reject the application because we cannot go against with the technical report from the Transportation Department.
Motion to refuse by Mr. Chang. Second by Mr. Nipfel. So the motion to refuse on the table. Show of hands please, all those in favor. The motion is carried, the application is refused. And this is due to the fact that approving it as it stands would lead to a, an application that was inconsistent with the official plan. And panel moves on to number four, 127 Everden Road, on which application we have before us, material submitted by the applicant. We have a commenting report by Urban Forestry. We have correspondence in support from Eric Kirshenblatt, 193 Strathern, and nine form letters in support from occupants and owners of Everden Road, 28 Gloucester Grove. And so, moderator, do we have the applicant with us?
Dear Mr. Chair, Mike De Oliveira is on the line.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Mike De Oliveira. I'm here representing 127 Everden Road, and I'm with Replacement Design located at 911 Davenport Road.
Thank you very much. That's what we needed to know. I'm going to ask panel members whether they feel they need a presentation or whether they'd like to come to you directly with questions. Panel? No presentation needed. Are there any questions for Mr. De Oliveira? Seeing none, then I'll look the panel for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of this application. I think it's, it's relatively straightforward, minor, it has no negative implications for the immediate neighborhood. My motion is subject to forestry condition number two.
Thank you. So motion to approve subject to forestry. Is there a second to that motion? Second, Mr. Chang. Show of hands please, all those in favor. The application is, is, the motion is carried, the application is approved unanimously subject to urban forestry. Panel moves to application number five.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. 693 Ossington Avenue. Here we're looking at the following. Material submitted by the applicant. Presentation materials from Craig Race, the agent. We have a report from Engineering and Construction. And there is correspondence in support from Paula Klein of 520 Roxton Road. Moderator, is Craig Race with us?
That's correct, he's on the line.
Good morning.
Good morning. Craig Race here, applicant.
Thank you very much. I'm going to check with panel members. Panel? Do you wish a presentation, or do you have questions? Presentation requested? Yes. Okay, Mr. Race, a presentation has been requested, so you'll have five minutes, please, to, to explain your application to us. Please proceed.
Sure. Can you, can you please pull up the design brief we submitted? So the application before you today seeks to convert an existing two-story home on Ossington Avenue just south of Blurr Street into a three-story multi-unit house. The use is as of right, however, the building dimensions do require variances. Next, next page, please. So the application seeks to maintain the existing footprint more away from Ossington and build a front addition that will bring the front of the building aligned with the neighbors to the south, as well as most similar setbacks for the street. Next page, please. So for, to study the context of the site, like I said, it's just less than 200 meters from Blurr Street and Ossington subway station. It's a highly developed portion of Blurr that's very bikeable and walkable, and Ossington is serviced by multiple 24-hour bus lines in addition to the subway. There's also an existing pattern of multi-unit low-rise homes and other small buildings on Ossington. Next page, please. So the front setback is designed to reinforce the street wall that's prevalent on this portion of Ossington Avenue. We happen to be on an unusual portion where a few houses are stepped back slightly farther. So being aware of that, we did collaborate with the neighbor to the north, who's most affected by this proposal, who submitted a signed letter of support. But our goal is to reinforce the street wall and make it consistent with the prevalent character. Next page, please. So going through the variances, there are two variances related to an entrance to a basement secondary suite. This is just a single entrance at the front that allows for a direct entrance for the unit. There's only a single instance of this in the project, and it is a common pattern for the street, as is evidenced by the two immediate neighbors as well as other houses nearby. Next page, please. We're also seeking variances for height of the first floor above grade as well as overall height. These were designed to match the neighbors as well. It's very common for front porches to act as a refuge from this busy portion of Ossington, so that's a consistent pattern we're maintaining. And also overall height is consistent with the neighbors as well as other committee precedents that we attached in the appendix of this report, hopefully of room. Next page, please. So there is a variance for depth. Like I mentioned, we are maintaining the rear portion of the building and then constructing a front addition to align it with the neighbor and other neighbors on the street. This is entirely derived from context. We also consulted very closely with community planning and the neighbor to the north early and often throughout the design process. We're also triggering variances for FSI and the north lot setback. FSI, I think, is obvious why, and it's consistent with other committee decisions as well as the prevalent character of the street. And the north setback is maintaining the existing setback of the existing building. Finally, there's a variance for parking. We are actually providing two vehicle parking spaces, although legal dimensions only count it as one, there are two functional spots. There's also room for bike parking in the existing rear garage. Next page, please. So looking at neighborhood outreach, we have canvassed the neighborhood fairly extensively, but prior to that, we did work closely with community planning and with the immediate neighbors so that they were consulted on the design. That's how we created the stepped-in third floor and other design gestures that we are hoping will be respectful of their property. In canvassing the neighbors, many of the immediate neighbors are renters, so they did not sign the letters of support, but they did give verbal support. Next page, please. And finally, we did a sun study that was used to help design the building. So in the morning, the shadow tends to cast onto Ossington Avenue, which is a busy street, and the front yards of Ossington are simply not used because it's so busy. So in consultation with the neighbors to the north, they were supportive of this because if you go to the next page, in the midday and afternoon, the sun is only barely adding any shadow to the rear yard. One more page, please. And you can see that in the afternoon, there's already shaded rear yards, so we're not making that condition any worse, and we're not adding any shadow to the properties across the laneway from us. And then the next page, please, is the final one.
Mr. Race, I will advise you that your time is up. You'll need to wrap up now, please.
Thank you. I'll just conclude by saying, this type of housing is exactly what Toronto needs. Secondary suites and low-rise forms are embraced by the official plan, especially in connected, walkable neighborhoods on busy streets like this. We've worked to engage the neighbors and the city in our design process so that we can be sure this new housing is a sensitive and sensible infusion. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Panel members, are there any questions? Mr. Solomon?
So I'm trying to understand what is the actual main use? Is this still a detached house, or is this a multi-unit residential building?
So this is considered a detached house with secondary suites.
Under the existing zoning, is a multi-unit residential building considered a permitted use?
Yes, it is. You'll see we do not have a variance for adding the secondary suites. Your permitted multiplexes and apartment buildings on these sites.
Well, when I look at the variance for secondary suites...
I'm sorry, we're having, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Mr. Solomon, the applicant couldn't quite hear you.
Variance number four refers to the total interior floor area occupied by the secondary suites.
Correct. So we tried to make each unit in the building of equal size. We didn't want to have any bachelor or really tight one-bedroom units, so we equally apportioned the floor areas between each unit so that we could have two-bedroom and three-bedroom units that were more family oriented. That led to us not having sort of a large main unit and then small secondary suites that would be smaller portions thereof.
Thank you. Further questions?
I have one further question, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman? First of all, I'd like, first of all, I'd like to, to thank the applicant for a very extensive and helpful presentation, both verbally and the presentation materials were excellent. I'm wondering if, do you have the opposition letter from Paula Klein?
Yes, we've spoken to that neighbor as well since we received the letter.
Okay, I'm just, I'm assuming that her con, her comment is that, due to the location of my house, and she is at 520 Roxton Road, due to the location of my house adding a third, or, or, due to the location of my house, I have to send my base study screen. Have you considered whether that statement, whether that statement actually is correct? Will you in fact, on the shade or the sunlight into her property?
Yes, so we, we did the shadow study after we had talked to her to show where our afternoon shadow would be cast, and it will not be cast into her backyard, which I believe is why she did not call in today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions of Mr. Race, then I shall look to panel members for a motion on the application, please.
I do have some comments. My, my comments are that I don't have issues if this use is considered a multi-unit residential building, but the variances as they've been presented...
Okay, thank you very much. That's very helpful.
And as the notice is indicated, the, the notice is that this is considered a detached house, and that's how it's being reviewed under, and I have concerns of a detached house with five, a primary dwelling unit with five additional, a secondary suites that occupy the majority of the interior floor area.
Can you hear me? All right. Just to speak to that, I agree that the way they're reviewing this is slightly unusual. Our understanding is that because it's an existing single-family house that we're creating in addition to, it has to be continued to be reviewed as a single-family house with secondary suites added to it. So that was something we were required to do by the zoning examiner. And ultimately...
My, my comment is, you actually went through a pretty interesting route to get this review because you are still sticking inside as a single-family house, so that's why it is still a minor variance, because if you convert it to a multi-unit housing, we will be not talking about this application here now. So going through the secondary suite route is pretty smart, I would say, and I...
That is not correct. Apartment buildings and, I believe, up to six complexes are permitted as of right on this site.
Oh, okay.
So this would still be a minor variance application, even if it had been reviewed as an apartment building or a sixplex.
Okay, thanks for letting me know.
Thank you.
Yeah, but either way, I think as long as your neighbour behind is satisfied with the shadow, I have no problem of approving your application.
Would you care to make a motion?
Okay, I will make a motion to approve this application, because of the nature of the application has no serious negative impact to the neighbour, and it meets the four tests, therefore I approve it.
Motion to approve by Mr. Cheng. Second?
I would second the motion. I agree with the mover's comments.
Second by Mr. Nipfel. Panel, we have a motion to approve before us. Show of hands, please, all those in favour. Those opposed? Mr. Solomon is opposed. The motion is carried, the application is approved. And panel moves along to item number six, 283 Adelaide Street West. Here we are looking at material submitted by the applicant. There's a covering letter from Alex Marshall, the agent, and it's a parking study prepared by the BA Group. We also have commenting reports from Transportation Services. Two, in fact, from Transportation Services. Moderator?
We have the agent on the line, Alex Marshall.
Good morning.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Alex Marshall here at Clinical International.
Thank you very, very much. Mr. Marshall, I'm just going to check with panel members. We'll see if they'd like a presentation, or whether they have any questions for you. Panel? Mr. Solomon?
I have one... Sorry.
Could you repeat, Mr. Solomon, please?
I have one question, is...
Pardon me, go ahead, Mr. Nipfel.
I just wanted to know whether or not this application is in the process of a site plan control review.
Applicant?
Site plan approval, has already received building permit approval, is under construction, and these variances were identified through the registration process and the preparation for registration, as they're a result of some mechanical construction issues.
But you also went through a site plan control application that was approved, correct?
That is correct. The site plan control application is approved, the building permit application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Solomon, I believe you had a question. Please proceed.
Yes, so my question was, in terms of the resident parking spaces that are undersized, have those parking spaces been sold yet?
No, they have not been sold, and as per the conditions recommended by the Transportation Department, we would have to identify in warning clauses and identify those smaller spaces before being sold.
Great, that addresses my concern. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, then I'd look to panel for a motion, please.
I'll move a motion to approve the requested variances subject to Transportation Services conditions.
Motion to approve by Mr. Solomon, subject to Transportation. Second on that?
Including the, I think the part of that is more advisory, in terms of the rental agreements. I'm not sure who would, at the city, would be monitoring or enforcing that regarding the clauses. So that's more advisory, but the signage is one, a condition that would be able to be enforced.
So it would be condition number one and number two?
Condition number two? I don't know who's going to be looking at all the clauses for purchase and sale at the city, but that's not something...
I guess that, I feel important about, that that's an important condition, that if somebody does purchase that parking space, they need to know that they are in fact purchasing a parking space that is undersized and their vehicle may have issues.
Right, but there's nobody at the city who's going to enforce that. That they would have to be involved in every purchase and sale of a parking space, and there's no one at the city who has that responsibility. I don't know who's to, to whose satisfaction that would be. I think it's an advisory to the applicant that they should include that. I'm not sure about real estate clauses and what the obligation is on behalf of the seller. But I just caution you, if you impose that condition in your decision, I'm not sure who's going to actually... And also, conditions should be able to be fulfilled in a reasonable timeline with permits, et cetera, in construction. So this might be an ongoing thing every time parking spots are purchased and sold. Anyway, I will leave it to the committee to make sure that you understood the implications of that condition.
Can we change the condition to, say, having a note in the drawings, all issued to the city, to mention about that these are parkings for smaller vehicles, so that if I'm a buyer, when I look into these public documents, I know what I'm getting into?
Again, I don't know what people will be seeing when they purchase those parking spaces. I think if they're signed, they will hopefully...
Yeah.
After the fact, if they're signed, they'll know, but I think the obligation, I think it's more of an advisory to, and if you purchase a parking space and you weren't told and your car doesn't fit, I think that's a, that's an issue between the purchaser and the seller, not the city.
Okay.
You are granting a variance, but it's...
Right.
On the understanding that the seller will, I don't know, perhaps the applicant would like to weigh in.
Applicant, any comment on that?
Yes, I'd just like to go back to the condition as word. I believe it will still be checked through the registration process, and because now an item attached to our zoning approval, I believe there will be someone in the city reviewing, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to add the clauses to purchase, our agreements of purchase and sale, as written in the condition, and make sure that is demonstrated through our registration application prior to approval.
Okay, then, thank you. Okay, I think that clears that up about as well as we can.
So, Mr. Chairman, is the condition that the documents of agreement and sale will include these clauses, is, I think it's a great understanding, I just wanted to make sure what we're doing.
Yes, so there's, the original motion will stand that Mr. Solomon made, imposing both conditions outlined in the Transportation Services report.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Cheng seconds. So we have a motion to approve, subject to the two transportation reports, seconded by Mr. Cheng, put forward by Mr. Solomon. Show of hands, please, all those in favour. So the motion is carried unanimously, and the application is approved, subject to the planning reports of 19 October and November 16. Committee moves along to 77 Condor Ave. Here our attention is to materials submitted by the applicant. There's a pre-protection plan, and a planning justification from Karen and Michael Fritzlar, plus an arborist report by the tree doctors. We have commenting reports from city planning and from community planning. And there is correspondence in support from Cheryl Woodman, also from 81 Condor, 8085 Condor, 79 Condor. There is opposition correspondence from Susan Dennis of 70 Seymour Avenue. Moderator?
Mr. Chairman, we have the agent Eddie Perez on the line.
Hello, good afternoon, committee members, and Chairman, this is Eddie.
Good morning, Eddie.
How are you?
Doing well, thanks. I'm just going to check with panel members. Panel members, do we request a presentation here? Are there, or are there questions for Mr. Perez?
Mr. Chairman, is the person opposed Suzanne Dennis, is she going to speak?
She is not registered to speak.
I don't need a presentation, but I would certainly like the applicant to respond to the points that Mr. or Mrs. Dennis made. She said, "I am concerned both about pushing the building envelope farther into the rear yard and then adding a third floor, and what that will do to the surrounding neighbour's privacy, decreasing view and open sky." I think those are legitimate concerns. I would like the applicant to respond to those. I don't need a full presentation.
Very good. Mr. Perez?
Yeah, good morning again. Our rear yard, after building the addition, is going to be 14.04 metres, and we're going to be approximately 28 metres away from her house, so we're not interfering with the privacy, and we're going to put privacy fences as well. And the footprint of the house, the addition is pretty well going on top of an existing deck that's there now, and then we're putting a small little deck a little further back. So I feel that we're not obstructing the neighbour, because she's very a distance away, and we have approval from the both adjacent neighbours, and that's who that would impact the most, and they have no, nothing against it. So I feel that it's very minor in nature.
Could you show me on, or can you indicate on the site plan where the fencing is that you're installing? And I noticed that you've got, if I'm correct, you've got a very substantial third-floor balcony, but it has a five-foot-two-inch-high fence all the way around it, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That's for privacy for both them and the neighbours.
Okay, and then you indicated you're putting fencing in separate from that. Are you putting fencing on the grade, the ground floor?
No, no, that's just putting the fencing on the balconies too. That's what we're imprinting on her, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, then. Panel members, if there are no further questions for Mr. Perez, then I look to panel for a motion on the application, please.
I'll move approval of the requested variances subject to community planning conditions.
Motion to approve, subject to community planning, by Mr. Solomon, second?
I'd second the motion, but I would like to add that in future, it's helpful when you're doing a proposal to a semi-detached home, if you show the attached dwelling. There's no, and it's unfortunate here, there's no drawing that shows the proposal attached to the existing building. That would have been very, that would have been very helpful.
Thank you. So motion before the committee to approve, subject to community planning, by Mr. Solomon, second Mr. Nipfel. Show of hands, all those in favour. And the motion is carried, the application is approved unanimously, subject to community planning. Thank you. Our attention now goes to number eight, 723 Queen Street West. We have materials from the applicant, there's a covering letter from Joe Lobko, who is the agent, and there are commenting reports from community planning, city planning, from Engineering and Construction Services, and from Heritage Preservation Services. Plus, there are staff reports from community planning and traffic planning. And we have a letter from councillor Cressy, which happens to recommend approval. On this application, there is a list of those who wish to speak in opposition, so moderator, is the agent on the line?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Joe Lobko is on the line, and there are five speaking in opposition.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Lobko.
Good morning. My name is Joe Lobko, 50 Park Road, Toronto.
Thank you very much. You will have five minutes to present your application, starting now. Please carry on.
Thank you. I'll try to be concise, Mr. Chair. The Salvation Army has been at this location for well over 100 years now. It established the first building in 1913 at the rear of the property along Tecumseh, and that was followed by a two-story temple-like structure with an address on Queen Street West. About 20 years ago, City of Toronto staff asked the Salvation Army to consider hosting an emergency shelter for women at this location, and that was intended to be a short-term measure. 20 years later, that need has risen rather than disappeared, and the original form of the building was never intended to be an emergency shelter, and it is not conducive to that purpose. And so, over the last number of years, the Salvation Army has been working with city officials diligently to find a way to revitalise the site and improve the accommodation and service that the Salvation Army can bring to this community through the redevelopment proposed. That redesign effort involved numerous discussions with planning staff and heritage staff, as well as engineering staff, and also, I would say, with Toronto Hydro. If you would just hold on to those perspective views or for a moment, those coloured ones, you'll see those high-voltage power lines that present quite a challenge to development, and development has to be set back from those high-voltage power lines, as one example of many things that have been negotiated in the process of bringing this project forward for your consideration. It includes the retention of the rear portion of the original facade of the 1913 building along Tecumseh, which will become the new entrance for women seeking care and comfort at this facility going forward. You'll notice that the nature of this application is not about use, it's not about overall scale, it is about some very specific minor variances. You'll also notice in the range of letters from city staff, general support for the proposal from a range of perspectives. The variances are in six categories. The first is density, from three to 3.4 times eight density coverage. In the new West Queen West planning policy, density is being replaced with built form, and heights up to 20 metres are now being allowed, and intensification is being encouraged along this corridor, so that's a very minor consideration. Parking has never been on the site. Using the site for parking is, it's not large enough for an underground lot, and it's not an appropriate use for the surface, and the facility has been successful in operation without parking for its entire life, and city's engineering staff support not providing parking on this site. The roof coverage is a very minor overage, so that we can actually use that roof to allow women a place, a secure place of refuge outdoors from time to time. The portion of the roof structure that has a presence to Queen Street above the allowable height of the building is a very minor encroachment, from 20 to 25%, I believe, that has to do with the width of the exit stairwell required. The laneway setback, we're not able to comply with because of the work with everyone to preserve that rear facade. So that rear facade defines the nature of the lane, and you can see from Engineering Services, the lane is still two-way traffic, and the priority of preservation outweighs the widening of the lane in this case. The height is a very minor variance, from 16 to 16.65, and as... I mentioned a minute ago, the overall height in the neighborhood is going to be increased or has been increased through recent policy. Once we got word that we were able to, we're going to be able to have this hearing, the Salvation Army mobilized a community engagement effort that involved the distribution of a thousand flyers in the neighborhood. There's also a website that was established. The Salvation Army has done that, and I believe it was November twenty-third where we convened a community virtual meeting, where we presented the work to the community. And that work, that updated presentation remains on the Salvation Army website, including a report from the discussion of that community meeting, all the dialogue and the questions and answers provided. In general terms, the community really needs more facilities like this. It needs this place to be revitalized. It continues to need the support of the Salvation Army. There's been a lot of effort to bring it to this point, and I would, in my opinion, the variances requested are minor and absolutely meet the four tests of the planning act. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lobko. Now, panel, I suggest we go ahead and listen to those speaking in opposition, and then come back to Mr. Lobko with our questions. Is that okay with you? Okay. Moderator?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have Yolanda Bertucci.
Okay, Yolanda, good morning.
Good morning.
Just before you get started, what I'm going to do in this case, we have five persons wishing to speak to the application in opposition, so bearing in mind-
So mine is fairly quick.
Just a moment, please. Just one moment. Bearing in mind how many, how many speakers we have and how many applications the committee has before today, I am going to limit the speakers to three minutes, and I'll just say in advance that your cause is not advanced by reputation, so I'll ask successive speakers to please take care to focus on the impact on new areas that haven't been mentioned by those before you. So, Yolanda, please state your name.
My name's Yolanda Bertucci, and I own the building right next door at seven-twenty-one Queen Street.
You have three minutes. Please proceed.
Okay, so, right now, the city council is going to approve the new registry for heritage. And the address on this lot is incorrect. It should be seven-twenty-three, not seven-twenty-five. Now, I have no problem with the Salvation Army. The problem is, there's that little alcove between the two buildings that have been there forever, and we have windows along that side. Now, they want to build right up to my windows and not leave that little alcove. However, it was a church, and I'm not sure, but any minute they're going to approve a whole bunch of addresses on Queen Street as heritage, which is not listed on the form. It said not applicable.
Hello, Yolanda?
Yes?
So, through you, Mr. Chair, if you go to the Application Information Center, there is correspondence from Heritage, and they've been in contact with the applicant, and they won't be commenting on this particular application from a Heritage perspective.
Yolanda?
Yes?
Yes, you're still with us? Okay?
We are. I am.
Yes, so, the Deputy Secretary Treasurer was commenting that Heritage is aware of the application and has advised committee that they will not be commenting, but they are aware of it, so they looked at it.
Okay.
Do you have anything further to add?
Just those three points.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, might I ask a question?
Oh, yes.
On the, on the site plan, on the site plan, I don't know if we could put it up on the screen, I'm trying to figure out where the windows are that were just referred to. The lady indicated that they're along an alcove, and I don't see an alcove, so is the site plan absorbing the alcove? I'm just lost as to where these windows are. Lost as to where these windows are.
Yolanda, are you with us still?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. So, could you comment, maybe help us to locate the windows in the alcove?
So, so right now-
Trying to find the alcove on the drawing to better understand your concern.
Right, you'd have to look on the survey. So, between us, the Salvation Army has windows, because it was a church, and we have windows that have been there probably since the nineteen thirties on the second floor. The alcove, if you look in the survey, the line-
Yep, I see it now. Thank you. Thank you. Yep, I can see it now. Thank you. And your windows open onto that alcove. Is that correct?
They do. I have four windows, and I have mechanics that bent out that way from the basement. There's two windows in the basement, four on the second floor, and all my mechanics and equipment are there.
Thank you very much for clarifying.
All right. The next speaker is Ian Dells.
Good morning, Ian.
Hey, good morning, everyone. How are you?
Doing well, thanks. Ian, please state your name.
My name is Ian Dells. I'm a resident of sixty-seven, Six Seventy-Six Richmond Street West. My unit backs onto the shared alley.
Thank you. You have three minutes. Please proceed.
Okay, cool. So, my concerns slightly overlap with those of the last, primarily related to Heritage and the character of the building, or the street, rather. So, Mr. Lobko noted that the building is over a hundred years old in history, further that it was temple-like in its construction. So, upon reviewing the renders of the, of the plan, my concern is that although it is true that a portion, and just a portion, of the original facade is maintained, it's an extremely small part, a part, rather, and further, it's on Tecumseh rather than Queen, which is the main street. So, it appears for the vast extent of the building facade will be demolished. So, my main concern is death by a thousand paper cuts of the character of the neighborhood. I'm wondering, I mean, I guess this relates to the Heritage note that was already raised, but I'm wondering, I guess I'll answer, I guess we'll hear back from Heritage if it's going to be designated as Heritage, but it seems like, you know, the character of the neighborhood, if, if every owner of every building on the, on the street were to do the same, it would just look like Front Street.
Thank you. Panel questions of the speaker? Hearing none? I will thank the speaker for his comments. Thank you. Moderator?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the next speaker is Joanne Bernard.
Good morning, Joanne.
My name's Ken Chumick. I'm the spouse of Joanne, and I'm speaking on-
Can we get you to spell your name and speak clearly? We can't hear you.
Kenneth Chumick, K-E-N-N-E-T-H, C-H-U-M-I-K. I live at Two Palmerston Avenue. Literally across the street from the proposed.
Okay, you have three minutes to address the committee with your concerns. Please-
Thank you.
Carry on, and speak up a little more loudly, please, to help us.
Thank you. My concern is that, I believe they, I have a real concern that they're putting too much building on this property, and I think the variances that are coming before you suggest that. The second concern is that there's been no opportunity for community input. Yeah, they had a virtual meeting a week ago, which I attended, and I got some information from them, but it strikes me that this should go to rezoning, and I would like them to withdraw the application and go through a rezoning process. I think they can do better in the design and implementation of the project. They're talking about increasing the beds, forty percent, forty, forty-five percent. Means more, more clients coming into the building, which is okay, but I'm wondering, the neighborhood has never had a chance to really understand the impact of that, and I think the rezoning process would be the best way to do that, through, through meetings and such. It seems to me that all the institutions are in favor of this, and I am as well. I've lived here thirty-five years, and I have very little negative to say about them. They run a tight ship, but I think we could do better. I don't think this type of institutional design works anymore, and to make a decision like this in terms of, of this usage in terms of a pandemic is borders on, like, what are we doing? One application of that would be the green space. They're putting it on the roof. Personally, I think the, it's one-story-two tall for the neighborhood, but they're putting the green space on the roof. You've got, you've got clients with serious emotional problems. You're not going to, you're not going to put those people on the roof. They're going to jump off, or some of them are going to jump off, or somebody's going to have to watch them. Their reaction is, well, they can wander down to the park down the street.
Kenneth, I'll advise you that you're drawing to the end of your time. You should wrap up now, please.
One other point. If I overbuilt on my property and I said, "Well, my tenants can wander down to the park on the street," I don't think you guys would approve it. There's, they're going to have like ninety, ninety-five people in that building plus a staff, and there's, there's room for twenty people there on the roof. Plus, consider the wind. We have a westerly wind in the summer. They're up eight stories. There's going to be a lot of days when you can't even use the roof. So I think at least-
Kenneth, I have to, I have to advise you, your time has now elapsed. Thank you very much for your comments. Any questions for that speaker, committee panel? Nope. Okay, then, moderator?
Next up is Cornel Vander Spik.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hello, this is Cornel. Can you hear me?
We do. Please. Yes, you're with us now. You have three minutes.
This is Cornel. Thank you for letting me speak.
Is he relation to the property? We have him at an address on Tocumseh Street.
I'll ask that. Okay.
I'm a Toronto resident who lived at Fourteen Palmerston for several years in the early nineties, and this is one of my favorite parts of the city. I'm in the neighborhood at least once a month on average, so I deeply care about the character of the neighborhood. First of all, I'm really excited about the project. I think more shelter beds for women experiencing homelessness is really great news. I have two concerns, though. One is that the building plays well with the buildings around it. West Queen West has a really unique texture, a well-worn patina that comes with being a much-loved part of the city. There's brick, stone, terrazzo, painted wood, concrete, asphalt, all melding together to create a soulfulness that just deepens with time. And there are some good examples of new developments in the neighborhood that really respect this quality. The CB2 Furniture Shop restored a Heritage building at Queen and Bathurst, and they kept remnants of the previous uses in there. If you walk on the main floor, you're stepping on layers of past flooring, including the dance floor of the Big Block nightclub, so it honors the past and makes it present. The condo development at ten-ninety-three Queen West is similar. Although it's entirely a new building, it's got a multicolored facade that has a chameleon-like quality that fits perfectly with the buildings around it, including the great hall right next door. So, my hope is that the new Florence Booth House will honor the neighborhood's character as these other examples do. My second concern is that the painted sign on the side of the building be retained in a publicly visible way. The sign is a neighborhood landmark that has anchored Queen and Tecumseh for decades. It was there in the early nineties when I lived on Palmerston, and it's still there three decades later. It has a faded, weather-beaten beauty that captures the magnetism of the neighborhood in just a few square meters. The sign also creates a moment of reflection in a busy commercial street. It's a Bible passage about the way, the truth, and the life. Some might interpret it as saying Christianity is the only path to God, but there's also a more generous interpretation. It's an invitation for anyone walking by, waiting for them to consider it, and in my view, those who are supporting women experiencing homelessness and helping them put their lives back together are indeed following that way, that truth, and that life. So I hope this beautiful sign can continue to anchor the corner of Queen and Tecumseh for decades to come as part of the new Florence Booth House. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your insight on the Heritage elements of the building. Panel members, any questions of this speaker? Very good. Moderator, does that complete the?
There's one more speaker, Leanne Baxter.
Thank you. Good morning.
My name's Leanne Baxter, and I live at six-seventy-six Richmond Street, which, and my unit backs onto the lane directly behind the building that we're talking about.
Good morning, Leanne. Okay, you'll have three minutes to address the committee, and your talk starts now. Please, please proceed, and I think you might speak up just a touch, please.
Okay. My primary concern is the health and welfare of the neighborhood and of women seeking shelter and protection at Florence Booth House. A vulnerable aspect of the property has been the illegal activity, including drug dealing and drug use, in the lane south of the building. Will the architectural footprint of the rebuild change the lane in any way that would increase opportunities for concealed activity, and will there be mounted cameras and/or lighting in the lane area behind the building to discourage the potential for that? And I also wondered if there was going to be a supervised injection site in the building. I think this is necessary to help reduce the risk to everyone curbing the illegal drug use in the laneway. And then, lastly, for security, will there be building security or a watchperson inside, outside premises to deter, deter potential conflict behavior or activity?
Thank you very much. Any comments, or, sorry, panel, any questions for this speaker? Okay, thank you, Leanne. And with that, I believe we have been through the registered list of those wishing to speak to the application in opposition. So we'll go back now to the applicant. I'm going to ask the applicant to focus on the topics that were raised by the various speakers. The issue was brought up that, in his view, this is simply too much building for the site. It's one-story-two tall. There was also concern, there was, mentioned several times, was concern about the lost Heritage elements that will happen with, with the demolition, that the building has a long and important history in the area, and even things like the sign have value from a Heritage point. And then there was all finally concern about activity in the laneway outside the building. So applicant, if you would address those items, please. You have five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, might you also add the concern of the property owner to the east about her windows that are going to be blocked up?
I beg your pardon. Very, very important, yes. With respect to these windows that have had some sunlight for about ninety years, the building to the east, loss of the alcove. Thank you, Mr. Niffel. Please carry on, applicant.
Yeah, it's Joe Lobko here, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to try to go through each of the speakers and the comments they raised as quickly as I can. Could, could we have a survey up on the screen while I'm chatting about Yolanda Bertucci's concerns? Yolanda and I have spoken on the phone. I asked to reach out to her during the community meeting we had, and we've only become aware recently that she has actually extended an exhaust duct from her mechanical equipment into Salvation Army property into this traditional light well, and that goes up the roof. And we also- And we also understand that there are some windows on the second floor of her three-story building. Some of those windows are into bathrooms, and some of them are into the side of a large space at the back, which also has windows facing the rear. What I explained to Yolanda from my perspective and opinion is that it is, adjacent property owners on internal property lines are not allowed to encumber their neighbors' properties by placing windows or mechanical equipment into those areas that depend on them for light, notwithstanding historical conditions. If there is a legal matter to be resolved, it becomes a civil case that can, that this committee, I don't believe, but you guys can correct me, has the power to resolve. Nevertheless, I've tried to assure Yolanda that there's a, subsequent to receiving a planning approval and being able to proceed with the project, we will definitely be working with the immediate neighbor here to figure out how to help resolve those issues. But I would respectfully suggest those are not related to the planning concerns in front of us today. The other thing that Yolanda was mentioning, just to help interpret, we've had extensive conversations with Heritage. Heritage has recently announced a batch listing across West Queen West and in the east side of Toronto as well. And I think that's partly what Yolanda was concerned about, is that her property, as well as a number of others, as well as this property, has been identified as having some heritage value. Our extensive conversations followed extensive investigation of the potential to renovate this building rather than removing it. There are a number of reasons why that proved not to be feasible. Number one, there was major consensus about the program ambition and the need for a better building that served the needs of this community. A temple-like form that has no ground floor, in other words, no accessibility to the disabled, where you have to go half a level down or half a level up, was not going to cut it. The kind of space that depended on bunk beds is not what we want going forward. We want a place that engages with the street in a more respectful and appropriate manner, and so we've worked a fair bit to try to put a design forward that does those things. The City of Toronto Planning Department and Heritage folks have been working for four years with the community in developing a plan for the renewal of West Queen West that includes intensification, that includes the identification of Heritage when it really matters, and it also includes intensification up to six stories with four stories allowed on corner properties. That's the new policy going forward. We're bound by the existing zoning bylaws, and as I said earlier, the scale of this development is well within the imagined revitalized scale that council recently approved. So I would respectfully refute the suggestion that there's too much building on this property. The last caller, in fact, comes from another, her address, in fact, is another four-story building in the neighborhood. And there's an intensification that's coming, but they're trying, everyone's trying to do this in a way that does respect many of the attributes that we've heard about from residents.
Your time is drawing to a close. I'll ask you to wrap up now, please.
Yeah. A rezoning is not required. This is not about use. This is about some minor details to the plan. Yes, there will be security and improved lighting in the laneway, and yes, there is twenty-four-hour supervision on site. There always has been, always will be. We've really tried hard at the base of the building to keep the scale of the ground floor elements to the same scale as the retained facade, so that we've broken up that ground floor scale in particular to try to reflect that Queen Street character. The Salvation Army looks forward to renewing its mission here, but we really need a new building to do that. Thank you, members.
Thank you for that. Very good. Members, your opportunity now for questions to the applicant. Seeing none, let's take the application then into committee for, if there is any discussion, and for a motion, please.
I've got a comment.
Mr. Chairman, I...
Just, my comment would be that...
Mr. Solomon's going to go first, Mr. Niffel.
I don't think it's an over, I don't think it's an overdevelopment of the property. I note that the zoning, the variance, is that for a height increase of, from what's permitted is a height of sixteen meters, and the height increase that they're proposing is to go to sixteen point six five meters. And so I feel that the variances overall are minor in nature.
Thank you, Mr. Niffel. Please, carry on.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with Mr. Solomon. I believe that the variances are minor in nature. I think the services that are being provided are essential to a, to a, I think that the applicant has shown a commendable ability, both in terms of the, the only concern that I had was with the windows that the lady mentioned. It does appear that, subsequent to any approvals that might be granted, there's goodwill to solve those issues or to address those issues, those issues, not as severe as if they are into major habitable rooms. The windows apparently go into bathrooms, and one is a side window of a room that has visual access through windows on another. All existing community annual access through windows on the face of the building, all of the integration that this would like to bring forward. Unless I'm mistaken, none of the agencies have recommended conditions of approval. They've all indicated that they've been involved in the collaborative effort to bring this application for, collaborative effort to bring this application forward and that they support it.
Thank you. Mr. Cheng, anything to add?
Well, I guess I feel a little bit sad about the sign as some of the certain citizens brought up, but I guess with the variance that we are talking about, they are really minor, and I think the development has a good intent. So I hope that at the end, there will be a fine balance of keeping some character of the neighborhood. I think if you look at the drawings, the facades were trying to match with the existing contacts already of the bricks and woods, and hopefully they can try incorporating back the existing sign, and that's my comment, but overall, I do support the proposal.
Thanks, Mr. Cheng, and I support it as well. I believe that there has been ample due regard by the applicant, as evidenced by the fact that the variances do appear minor. So at this stage, then, I'll look to panel for a motion on the application, please. Motion by Mr. Solomon, carry on.
I'll move approval of the requested variances with no conditions.
Motion to approve by Mr. Solomon, second by Mr. Cheng.
Second, Mr. Chairman?
You already have a second, Mr. Cheng. Show of hands, please, all those in favor. So the motion is carried. The application is approved without conditions. And to those watching the hearing, it's now eleven forty AM. Panel has been going since nine, nine o'clock this morning. So I'm going to take a ten-minute recess, and we shall resume the hearing at eleven fifty AM.
And through you, Mr. Chair, just before we do take that ten-minute recess, I just want to remind the members, we do have eight more items, and the afternoon session starts at one thirty. We have a lot of people online waiting to speak.
See you all in ten minutes.
Yeah.
I don't think he would have, because he would have been back a little bit later on than he actually returned.
Yeah, I don't think he did either.
He still plugged his router and waited.
Yeah. So I was thinking, so I was thinking, do that? I just...
We need to make masks that are extra long so that we can tuck on our nose right up here and you can see your glasses. Yeah.
If you put the glasses over the top of it, they go...
Right now, yeah.
If they're right here, they're, they need to make glass, like, on the, kind of, top higher, and that your glasses connection flip on.
When I got these, I didn't even know what they looked like, because every time I put them on, I would look in the mirror, and just be like, oh, all right.
I see a lot of people walking around with glasses on.
Yeah. I find that now I have them, now that I have them, I'm more of a longer gentleman. Like, this morning, I couldn't really think of what was happening.
Yeah. How do you, you're trying to...
I have no idea. They're, apparently, when I went for the test, they said that I had, like, I need a four-point O description or negative four, which is, like, really strong. And then they kind of narrowed down and did more tests, and they're like, wait, you only need, like, a point five. And it was because I was, like, on computers so often, like, getting really into it, now I'm restrained, so it takes them, like, far better to focus on me.
If they could just, they screw up your numbers, then it'd affect your eyes, you know?
Yeah.
It's good that they had one test.
Yeah.
I feel like that's what happened to me. They gave me a wrong number, and now my white eye, my left eye is almost perfect, but my white eye, it's, like, very...
Yeah, really. How long did you have the glasses for? Were you, like...
I had glasses since growing up.
Oh, true.
So, like, I discovered how I found out I had glasses is my math teacher just had terrible reading, like, in high school, right? And I was, like, one day, I could barely read his writing, right? And then one day, I was like, sir, what is that? I can't read that. And he's like, in front of the whole class, he's like, do you need glasses? And I was like, oh, maybe I do, so I went to, like, algebra teachers, and I had glasses. I would just say, like, my math teacher's right and gave you glasses, basically.
You're not glasses.
Yeah.
I always thought I made it, but, like, after a while, it's just...
You'll get used to it.
I mean, it's, yeah.
I've been, I've been thinking about my basketball, like, I can't do it like that.
Putting stuff in your...
Exactly. I like my stuff and, like, like, do it, but, like, man, it's not water.
I tried to do eye drops, and it used to be, like, I'd swing back, throw it, and it would be terrible, and yell everywhere. And then I watched Sister's Husband has, like, heart contact and sock contact, so he's got, like, two in each eye, and he'll just, like, literally grab this idol and take it and then he showed me this way where you can, like, grab your idol and, like, pull it, and then just drop it, like, into the island, and then you just sit back and blink and it'll... Oh, so much easier to do that, like, maybe I'm just being a baby.
The uncontested, in the remaining part of the morning? To go through the uncontested ones, and we could do that. Nine? Let's do that. Forty-two. And number thirty. Thirty has a lot of opposition. Yeah, thirty seems to have quite a lot. At least in terms of write-ins.
Is it Terrar?
I'm not sure, but...
Hello, members, are you there? We don't see you.
We don't see you.
It's funny.
The hearing is not, I, I can't tell, the screen is frozen.
No, it's, they, so when they left, they turned off their video, and if you look in the top left, it says, "Or Hidden."
Yeah, I'm just wondering, y'all, if that's just frozen.
No, no, it.
So they're usually pretty good at coming back sometimes.
Yeah?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, it's funny a lot.
Carl's not back yet.
Oh.
You got it? I think you might have switched your screen.
Yeah.
Just in case they're there, let's do that, yeah. It's one next week?
Yeah.
Is that the last of the year?
Yeah.
Now, how, how did we do on catching up on the backlog?
We did November, but I think that just sent a message to the government, they're all ready for service now. Everybody started filing applications, so we're just waiting for the, for the board.
Ah.
We don't do great jobs.
Alright, if the committee members can hear me, we're gonna start up again, so if you'd like to come back to your computers.
This is a good sign?
It's Carl.
It's Carl. There we go. Good. Let me know when. Hearing now resumes. Thanks everyone for bearing with us during that recess, it was a little long. At this stage of the hearing, um, we will be completing the, the morning part of the agenda. I'm going to deal first with the uncontested applications which remain. They are numbers nine, fifteen, seventeen, and nineteen. And having heard those four uncontested applications, we'll then go back through the list to the applications which do have speakers in opposition, the so-called contested applications. So we start now with application number nine, nineteen thirty-nine Dufflin Street. And on this application, committee has before it materials submitted by the applicant. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent Pat Raciopo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please state your name.
Pat Raciopo.
Thank you very much. Pat, I'm gonna check with panel members to see if they'd like a presentation, or whether they have any questions for you. Panel members? No, seeing none? Then, uh, I'll look to panel members for a motion, please. Mr. Solomon.
I'll move a motion to approve the variances with no conditions.
Thank you very much. Second to that motion, Mr. Chang. So motion before the panel to approve without condition. Show of hands, all those in favor. And the motion is, uh, carried, the application is approved. Thank you. We move on to the next uncontested application, which is number fifteen, eleven sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue. Here the panel, panel has before it applicant's materials, there's a tree protection plan, there are fourteen photographs and a location map, plus an arborist report from Davy Resorts. And we have reports from urban forestry. And there are in fact, two form letters in support from eleven sixty-seven Greenwood and three sixty-seven O'Connor. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent Andrew Tower on the line.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi there. Good morning. Good morning, committee, uh, my name is Andrew Tower, I'm the homeowner of eleven sixty-nine Greenwood Avenue.
Thanks very much, Andrew. I'm just going to check with panel. Panel, any questions for the applicant? Desire for a presentation? No? In that case, could I look to panel member for a motion, please? Mr. Nipfo. Mr. Nipfo, yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move a, I'd like to move approval of the application, um, subject to forestry condition number two. I think this is a very straightforward application, it's compatible with the area. Um, and I note that it has the support of the people next door, um, both sides. Um, so I'd like to move approval with the condition forestry number two.
Thank you. Second to that motion, Mr. Solomon, thank you. Motion before committee to approve, show of hands, all those in favor. And the motion is carried unanimously, the application is approved, subject to urban forestry condition number two. Panel moves on to the next uncontested application, number seventeen, twenty-one Shadell. Where we have before us simply the applicant materials. Moderator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent Mr. Berus on the line.
Thank you. Good morning.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairs and members of the committee.
Please state your name.
Sean Lucy, I'm the office principal. Twenty-three, twenty-three Younger Street, unit five oh three, Toronto. M or P?
Thank you very much. Very, very good, thank you for that. Panel, we have the applicant with us, any questions? Request for presentation? No? Could we move to a motion then? Mr. Solomon.
Um, I'll move a motion to approve the variances, and there are no conditions.
Thank you. Second to Mr. Solomon's motion, Mr. Chang. There is a motion before the panel to approve the application. Show of hands, all those in favor. Motion is carried unanimously, the application is approved. And panel moves on to number nineteen. Thirty-eight Ridge Drive. We have applicant materials, plus there are thirteen form letters in support. Signed by owners or occupants of thirty-one, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, forty, forty-one, forty-four, forty-five, forty-nine, forty-seven Ridge, and seventeen and twenty-five Rosedale Heights. Is, uh, the applicant with us? Moderator?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Tom Sprague is on the line.
Thank you. Good morning.
Okay. Great, can you hear me alright?
Very well, could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, it's Tom Sprague, Sprague and Company Architects, and I'll just give you a very brief background of this particular application.
Tom, just, just hang on for a moment. I'm gonna just check with the panel members whether they would like the presentation, or whether they would like to go directly to questions to you. So just hang on for a moment, please. Panel members, any need for presentation, or any questions you'd like to pose? No, seeing none? Then I shall look to panel for a motion, please. Mr. Solomon.
Um, I, I note that, um, many houses on the street have a third story, and there are letters that support the adjacent neighbors. Uh, I would move approval of the variances, they are minor in nature, and there are no conditions.
Motion to approve, no conditions, Mr. Solomon, second to that, Mr. Nipfo. All those in favor, show of hands. And the motion is carried, the application is approved, without condition. So very good, we have gone through those uncontested applications. We'll now return to the order in which the applications appear on your agenda. Application number ten has been deferred, so that brings us now to application number eleven. And on this application, committee has before it applicant's materials. Commenting reports from city planning, engineering and construction. There are staff reports from engineering and construction, from transportation services, from urban forestry. And there is opposition. From William Denise Conway, forty-five Glad Hill, Eileen McInerney, forty-three Glad Hill, Jacqueline Hines, and Susan Mac, Macalier, thirty-nine Glad Hill. That's all written opposition. And, uh, moderator? We have some speakers in opposition?
Yes, that's correct, we have two speakers in opposition, and, uh, Richard Papa, the agent, is on the line.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Papa.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee. Can you hear me?
We do hear you, please just give us your name.
Sure, my name's Ricky Papa, I'm the agent architect, two sixty-three Adelaide Street West. Um, based on the recommendations by Engineering Services, Community Planning, and Transportation, we ask the committee to defer the subject application in hearing, so that we may address the comments in their respective reports. Um, I also note that we have engaged these departments and begun the process of addressing or complying with the request, um, with a revised submission directed to the departments.
So you are requesting deferment, deferral?
Correct.
And specifically, if you don't mind, you're, you're speaking a little softly, if you don't mind repeating your reason for the request?
Uh, just based on the recommendations by Engineering Services, Community Planning, and, and, uh, Transportation.
Now, um, so you understand the process, we do have speakers registered to speak, who apparently are in opposition, and we're gonna have to check with them whether they would be agreeable to a deferral, or whether they, they would prefer to see the application heard by committee now. So moderator, let's go to the first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Gerald Darcy is on the line.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we do. Is that Mr. Darcy?
So make sure that you can hear him for a second. Fantastic. I'm not looking for this.
Hi, sorry, Mr. Darcy, you're hard to hear, sounds like a poor connection, so I'm gonna give you a call on your cellphone so that we can connect. In the meantime, we have, uh, Jacqueline Hines.
Hello?
Good morning.
Hi.
Is that Jacqueline?
Yep.
Jacqueline Hines.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we, we do hear. Jacqueline?
Yes.
There has been a request by the applicant to defer the application in order for them to respond to comments made by the City of Toronto's Engineering and Construction Department.
Okay.
And, and planning. So.
So what does that mean for me?
I beg your pardon?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
What does that entail?
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chair, um, the city commenting groups, if you go online to the AIC, you'll be able to see the staff reports. They're all recommending that the application be deferred to meet with the applicant and discuss some issues that they're having with the proposal. Um, the committee could include in their deferral that the applicant meet with area residents to also listen to your concerns. Although the other part of deferrals is if there is, um, no intent on coming to some type of a compromise or to address issues, then the deferral really doesn't serve any purpose. So if it's deferred, you'll have an opportunity hopefully to speak with the agent, and if, um, when it comes back, if they decide to continue the application to committee, you'll get another notice in the mail. So I guess it's up to you as to whether or not you're willing to continue to, or whether you're willing to meet with the applicant to discuss your concerns. Safely, I might add.
Jacqueline? Hello, Jacqueline? Jacqueline, are you with us? If so, just let me know, please. Let's go back to Darcy.
Mr. Darcy? Excuse me, Gerald Darcy, can you hear me? Gerald, I'm talking to you through your cellphone, so if you're, have your cellphone available, just speak through that instead of your computer. Kinda just wanna try. Excuse me, Richard, can you hear me?
Yep, I'm on the line.
Perfect. Thank you. Hi, Jacqueline. We're going to try one more time.
Hi. Yes, I can hear you.
Perfect.
Jacqueline, okay, glad to have you with us. So...
Thank you.
Did you hear the comments by the Deputy Secretary Treasurer? Things to consider. We're wondering whether you would like, whether you would be agreeable to seeing the application deferred in order to, for the applicant to address some concerns with the city, and also, hopefully, to address concerns with residents and neighbors? Or whether you'd prefer to see the application heard by the committee now, and then the committee would make a decision on it?
I would prefer it by the committee now.
You'd like to hear it heard by committee now?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. We need to check with another speaker who was registered, and so please stand by.
Mr. Darcy, can you hear me? Gerald Darcy? Mr. Darcy, can you hear me? He's not responding through his phone or his cell phone or his computer anymore, so I don't really know what's happening. Yeah. Hi, Mr. Darcy, can you hear me? So I can hear you, but you're very distorted. That's why I phoned your cellphone. I'm going to try and unmute your cellphone. I need you to mute your computer and talk through your cellphone.
Press nine.
Your phone is unmuted now.
If you are satisfied with your message, press one.
I'm going to try and rephone you, okay? Please be sure to pick up the cellphone and follow the instructions to join the hearing, so that we can get a better connection with you. Hi, Gerald?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Gerald, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, you're clear, and this is good. Okay. Gerald?
Perfect.
The question I want to bring to you is this. The applicant has requested that the application be deferred. In other words, that the committee not hear it this morning. That it be deferred.
Yes.
And this presumably would be to address concerns that have been raised by city departments. And hopefully, would involve conference with neighbors or residents. That's one option. The other option is that committee could go ahead now, and hear the application as it stands, and make a decision on it as it stands now. So we're just, the committee has yet to vote on this, but we'd like your thoughts, your preference. Would you like to have the committee deal with this application here and now? Or would you agree that it should be deferred?
I personally would like to see this matter dealt with now. Just on item five, Mr. Chang actually referenced that multiple dwellings on the same lot may not be minor variance at all. And this is exactly in line with my opinion, so I would like to see it perceived because there's a lot of points. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, then, thank you. Please stand by. I'm going to return now to my fellow committee members.
Sorry, through, Mr. Chair, there is a third speaker, Kyle Kutisowicz, of Fifty Year Old Park Avenue. He advised me that he wasn't going to be able to attend today.
Okay, then. I shall return to the panel. Mr. Nipfo? Mr. Nipfo, please go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the Mr. Chairman, the difficulty we have with proceeding today is, we have three reporting departments who can't offer us any commentary. Planning has indicated that their understanding was that deferral would be requested, and they've not provided us with comments, but they have issues that they need to discuss with the applicant. Transportation has indicated that there are issues that need to change with the application, and Development Engineering has raised a number of questions that they have. I think we're in an awkward position here. I don't know that proceeding would do anybody any good, because we really need to have the commentary from those three departments in order to make a reasonable decision. So I'm, notwithstanding the polling of the residents, I think deferral is in everyone's best interest, because we don't have the information we need here for a decision.
Thank you very much. Further comments on that from panel members? If would you care to make a motion to that? In that regard, Mr. Nipfo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend, or I'd like to move that the application be deferred to allow for advice and recommendations from Transportation, Engineering, and Planning, and that the applicant, and that the purpose for the deferral is, as well, to allow the applicant to negotiate further with those people that have raised opposition at this hearing.
Thank you very much. Motion by Mr. Nipfo. Panel, is there a seconded for that motion? Second person? Yes, it is seconded by Mr. Chang. So, motion on the table. To defer. Show of hands, please, all those in favor. So the mo- Subject to the fee. Deferral fee.
Yes.
Yes, that's added to the motion. Okay, subject to the deferral fee. So it's a motion to defer, subject to the deferral fee. Show of hands, those in favor. And this motion, the motion is approved unanimously to defer the application, subject to a deferral fee. And the panel moves to the next application. Numbers twelve and thirteen have both been deferred by the panel already this morning. So we we are now at application number fourteen. Four Robinson Street. On this application, we're dealing with applicant's materials. There are two photographs and a location map. There is correspondence from City Planning. There's a staff report from Engineering and Construction Services. And there is written opposition, opposition from forty-three Markham, forty-five Markham Street, fifty-nine Markham Street, and One Ways Lane. So moderator?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent Jonathan Bencowski on the line, and there are two speakers in opposition.
Thanks very much for that. Okay. Okay, I guess it's good afternoon now. Jonathan?
Good afternoon. How are you doing?
Doing well, thank you. Could you identify you with us, to us, please, your name?
Yes, Jonathan Bencowski. I'm here on behalf of the owner.
Very good. You have five minutes to present your application to the committee. Please proceed.
Okay, so the application before you today is to construct a rear laneway suite. In terms of the location of this property, this is essentially a street that dead-ends into Bathurst. The proposed laneway suite would be on a lane that services properties on Bathurst as well as Markham Street. Now, if we could go to some of my support material, it would, I can walk you through the location. So here we have, four Robinson would be the center of the screen at the bottom. So the property, as mentioned, services, the lane proposed services both Bathurst as well as Markham. As we can see from this overhead shot from Toronto mapping, this is a very tightly dense and congested area today. In addition, located directly to the north of us is Seven Ways Lane, and if we can go down in my photo book, one more, please. We see here, this would be the immediate structure to the north. So what's important to note with all the structures on this lane is they all essentially sit on the property line of where the lane hits. In terms of the proposal of what's before you today, if we could go to the existing survey for the property, we see that there already is an existing garage that is there today. The existing setback along the east side is essentially point zero one millimeters, so again, essentially built on the property line. The north setback being point one three at the northeast corner, again, basically on the property line. The setback proposed for you today is point five meters. So that is an improvement of what is there today with the existing garage. And lastly, a small point with the survey, you'll see that there is an encroachment to the west, into the property to the west, that would be removed if this were approved today. There would be no more encroachment into that property to the west. When we look at the variances that are before you today, the separation between the dwelling and the garage is caused by a one-story addition at the rear. Now, when we look at the laneway guidelines, we speak of maximum lengths and widths, as well as coverages associated with laneway suites. In this case, there is no request for any of that, meaning the length, the width, and the proposed coverage of the laneway suite in relation to the garage is met. In terms of providing the required setback to have a six-meter-high building, it would not be possible to have a unit in the rear if that were the case, due to the densely packed nature of this neighborhood. Lastly, to just address the neighbors' concerns, the neighbors' concerns really deal with sightlines and access through the lane that is going through the private lane to access Markham. This is, this would be private property and still is private property. That being said, as mentioned earlier, the setback would be an improvement to that private lane being point five meters, as opposed to what is there today, at point one three meters. So sightline-wise, it would give them additional room. With all of that being said, this is still considered private property that is at the rear, as well as the side. So the introduction of a laneway building and a laneway suite is not anything new, as we can see from the picture I showed of the structure to the north, as well as the overhead mapping showing the tightly packed garages that really are along both lanes that service both the Bathurst dwellings, as well as the Markham Street dwellings. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have right now.
Thank you very much. Panel members? Do you want to do questions now? We're waiting until we've heard from the speakers in opposition. Why don't we move to the speakers in opposition? Moderator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first speaker is Arpad Vasegi.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name.
My name is Arpad Vasegi, and I'm part-owner, together with my wife, of number eight Robinson Street.
You have, you have five minutes to address your comments to the panel. We'd like to know the impact of, what the impact would be of this application on you if approved.
Yes. The house is right next to number four, so that is on Robinson Street, numbers six, eight, ten, twelve. We all back onto the lane which runs east-west immediately to the north of these houses. That is not Ways Lane, but the lane that opens off Ways Lane. And we have our garages back there. Trouble, there are two problems that I can see. One of them is accessibility for us. To be able to go in is already very difficult, to be able to turn into that lane because of a couple of things. One is the, how far up the garage of number four already comes up. And it comes up substantially more than where our garages are in the rest of that lane. And on top of that, there's a utility pole blocking our access, making it difficult to turn in by going past the lane and then trying to back in. Essentially, we have to back in, because we have to front out. When we're fronting out, because of the garage on number four's property, we have to pull over towards the next house to the north to be able to make our turn to go south down to Robinson Street. Mr. Bencowski said something about connecting with Bathurst. The lane does not, definitely not, and it also does not connect with Markham. It ends in the backyard on Markham. So it leads to a few problems. One of them, there's a safety issue for vehicles, for pedestrians. There are children who play in Ways Lane, mostly from the houses on Bathurst Street. But we have to be able to see them, but there's very little visibility. If you're going out forwards, that is inching your way forward to be able to make the right-hand turn to go back down into the city, like, onto Robinson Street, you really cannot see, so you have to really inch, 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 and hope that nobody comes and bashes into you, or there's no small child. To have anything done on those houses in the backyards, for example, I'm going to be taking down my garage at some point, because it's collapsing, to get any kind of vehicles into there, having to do with construction, are just about impossible. So we already have a problem with the encroachment onto that laneway by number four's garage. So what I would really like for for getting the visibility and taking care of the safety issue, and also getting more access to our lane, and making it safer and better in that regard. I'd really like that the minimum side back, sorry, the minimum side and back setbacks be brought to code. And really, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Questions, panel?
I do have a quick question. So do you mean you've been using part of this property to maneuver your vehicle?
I beg your pardon?
Because right now, my understanding is, because this proposal is not going to encroach the property, his building outside of his property. So my understanding is, are you saying that by maintaining the wall as is, you can still use his property as part of your driveway to maneuver your vehicle? Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, I do park behind my house, up behind my garage, but that's I have to go around the garage to be able to get out of that laneway, but I do drive on that laneway, yes.
I see. So that laneway partially is owned within the property of this applicant. So you're hoping that he won't build all the way into his property, that so that you can continue to use that road, is that?
Yes, what I'd like for him to do is to, is to, is to build in such a way that it's within code, so that, because according to the drawing that I see, his garage not only comes up to the line, it may go past his property line.
Oh, I see.
She's the, um, Madam Deputy Secretary?
I just want to, I don't believe the laneway is part of this property. It's a private laneway, but it's not owned by the applicant.
Correct.
Okay. So basically, if he builds or constructs what he is thinking of?
It's a public lane, as you see identified there.
Yeah.
It's not a public lane, it is a private lane.
Right.
Private lane, serving for...
There's the public lane runs on the east side. There's the public lane runs on the east side and then the north laneway is a private lane.
Understood.
And that lane services those of us on Robinson Street next to number four and heading west. And also services a house on Markham Street. It goes into his backyard essentially.
Because while you're talking, I'm checking the drawings. I don't think the proposal is building into either of this lane.
No, there's a, no, I'm not, well, it looks like, I'm looking at the drawing now and actually you have it up. And you'll see that on the north end, the garage, the existing garage is right on the property line. And if you have a look at some pictures which are sent by some other people, you'll see that that garage is way out compared to for all of the other garages on that lane. It's a bottleneck. We have to go around, we have to go around part of that garage. You'll see where it has the concrete block post.
Yeah, so I was just asking, are you hoping that he can share some of his property for the laneway so that people can make the turn? That's like, I guess that's my question.
I suppose I am, to bring it into line with the same line that everybody else on the lane has.
Okay, alright, got it.
Seems fair to me, I don't know.
Understood, I know, I just want to understand that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright then, thank you. Moderator? The next speaker is Claire Ironside. Good afternoon.
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we do. Please identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Claire Ironside and I live at number one Ways Lane, immediately opposite the existing garage and the proposed building site for the new laneway house.
There you have five minutes, please go on.
Okay, so I live at Ways Lane and I've done so for the past 24 years. My home is directly opposite the existing garage where the new laneway is to be built. I've experienced over this time the negative impact of a building, in this case, the existing garage, not being set back from its rear property line as it would have been had it been built respecting that 1.5-meter setback. Negative impacts include constricting access onto an offways lane into Kemp Lane, which is actually a private lane, but it's an orphan lane. I know this because I spoke to Public Works many times, asking if they would adopt it. And they've said, there's many of these orphan lanes, nobody really owns it. It's private, but it's been used sort of in a public way. So given the existing garage is located at the corners not set back from its rear lot line, turning access into Kemp Lane, which is the name of this private slash public lane from Ways Lane and vice versa, is very constricted, making it extremely difficult for vehicles to negotiate entering or leaving either lane. My neighbors at number six echo these sentiments. And as you heard the previous speaker, property damage to adjacent buildings on both sides of the lane, my house on the north, as well as the garage on the south, and the landscape on the north side of the lane adjacent my house. In my letter, which you have in front of you, I think, I indicated that my home has been damaged by vehicles hitting the house. I would like to add that following my submission to the CFA, my house was damaged again, this time November 28th, by a vehicle turning onto Kemp Offways Lane. Screen caps I sent from my security camera were not added to the file because obviously the incident came after the submission date had passed. With the proposed application to build a new laneway house at the rear of number four, the CFA has the opportunity to remedy this situation and introduce many positives to the neighborhood. If it were to allow the new laneway house to be built 1.2 meters closer to the main house, these positives include eliminating the continued physical encumbrance to drivers turning off one lane onto the other, eliminating and/or mitigating damage to adjacent property, and also possibly the new laneway house if it is allowed to be built right up against its property line, releasing land back to number six to the west that was encroached upon when the garage was initially built, replacing an existing underused structure which is in need of repairing, in this case, a garage, and most certainly will need to be rebuilt at some point in the near future, increasing security on the lane, supporting more people living in the downtown core, and improving the number four property overall. And finally, eliminating the need for a setback variance from the rear lot line, reducing the overall minor variance count by one. In closing, I would like to state that I do support the construction of a laneway house at the rear of number four. However, it must be set back 1.5 meters from the rear lot line for the reasons just stated. And just to clarify, my home on the north side has been set back the required, I built the house, I went through the CFA twice. So I built it to the setback requirements, side lot line. If you look at my photos, you can see there's an orange mark indicating where my property line starts. And then there's a landscape verge between that orange mark. If you can pull up my file, not the plan view. I put images in, if you could please find those. They came in with number one Ways Lane. There, okay, say stop please. So can you see that orange little marker? That's right at the survey post. You can actually see it just beyond the concrete. And if you go back to the corner of my house, that's the required setback. Alright, my understanding, I knew the former owners of number six. The garage back in the day was built over a supposedly long weekend without a building permit. And it, proof and point, you know, if it had 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 a building permit, it would have been set back from the property line. You can't build right up against your property line. So the property line is where the edge of the garage currently exists. Now if it went back 1.5 meters as it's supposed to do, it would be more in line with the neighbors'. Garages, which is what everybody just really wants here. It's blind, it's hard, and my security camera, which I took screenshots off.
I advise you that you're approaching your time limit. You should wrap up now, please.
Yeah, okay, I'm just saying if there is a real problem here in terms of being able to see and access easily onto the garages on the back, as well as it would improve the sightlines out onto the lane. It's very blind and it's unsafe.
Thank you very much. Panel members, questions for this speaker? No. Seeing none, we shall return to the applicant. An applicant will ask you to respond to the issues raised by the two speakers, which were quite similar. Both of them are concerned that your proposal doesn't allow for easier and safer access to that so-called private orphan lane. And that it could do so if the proposed building was aligned with their garages or in line with the bylaws. So they specify that there are various negative aspects of this that affect them on a daily basis could do. Give us your response, please.
Yes, a couple of things, sorry, a couple of things. The laneway itself is there today as a public lane. I think what the individuals are requesting is that they would like more access over this private property to be able to access their garages and parking. In this case, that is what's happening. As we see, the existing rear yard setback is 0.13 meters. The proposal is to increase it to 0.5 meters. So the access that they would have would be increased. Now that all being said, this still is private property. And as we saw from the photos that were there previously, the garage is actually accessed, meaning the existing parking is off of Ways Lane today. The existing parking for that garage is not located off of the public lane. So if the owner were to choose to, they are well within their rights to erect a fence at the rear. And by no means am I saying that's what's going to happen. But what I'm trying to illustrate is that their real concerns deal with wanting increased access over private property. In terms of how the variance relates to what's there in the lane, we can see the minimal setbacks. We can see it being in the downtown area where there is a desire for increased laneway suites, increased housing, increased transit. In terms of the proposed access for the laneway suite, it would continue to come off of Ways Lane. There is no proposal to have any access coming off of that public lane, which would have an increased rear yard setback, as well as an increased side yard setback coming off of Ways Lane. Now, one of the, actually, I believe both of these speakers spoke about the safety of the laneway itself. You know, the planning concept of eyes on the street, bringing people into laneways would only continue that safety aspect and continue to improve that. And I think lastly, I just want to address the idea of an encroachment. There is no encroachment request. And as we can see, there is a rear yard setback that is proposed off of both the public lane as well as Ways Lane, with all access coming off of Ways Lane. So I think this really comes down to a property dispute where if they were to have had more space, they would have been happier. But the problem is we're dealing with an existing garage that is there today. So that existing garage that is there today, and I have no knowledge of it being built over the weekend. I can, I'm fairly positive it wasn't my clients who did this, looking at the shape of the garage. I'm sure this was done many, many years ago. The access itself comes entirely from Ways Lane, not the public lane. And I think again, this really comes down to wanting more access off of the rear lane to really to pass over private property. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Panel members, questions for the applicant? Carl, please go ahead. Go ahead, please, Carl.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think there's a misunderstanding in what's been said. I think ideally, the people that have spoken would like to have more space to drive in. Yes, clear enough. But I don't think the issue is as clear as that. I don't think they're saying they want the right to drive on private property. As I heard all of the speakers say, the setback from both Ways Lane and the public lane, which in the bylaw is larger than what is proposed here, that existing setback or the bylaw setback provides greater visibility as you make the turn. And I think that's a valid point, that the minimal setbacks from Ways Lane and the public lane that are proposed don't provide very much visibility going around this corner. If they were both public streets, there would be restrictions on setback to provide that very issue, visibility. So I just wanted to, on behalf of the people objecting, clarify that it's not just that they want to drive on private property. Sure, if they had more space, they would use it. I think the issue that I heard was you can't see as you go around that corner. And the reduced setbacks are exacerbating that problem.
Applicant, any comment on that?
That, through you, Mr. Chair, sorry, was I unmuted?
Go ahead, we hear you now.
Oh, sorry, I heard a beep. What I would say through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Campbell, in terms of sightlines itself, the lane itself is really small as it is today. You know, and in terms of a garage setback that would be required if this were denied and rebuilt as a laneway suite, would be half the width of the original center line of the lane. So really, a new garage that would be built there would have a requirement of half of the width of the center line of the road. We would be basically 0.4 meters away from that. I would be willing, if it would please the committee, to increase that setback to 0.8, which would essentially be the same as a garage, not as a laneway suite, along that north portion to give increased visibility. And I think because I have no related variance for coverage, gross floor area or anything like that, it really wouldn't allow us to move the GFA and reappropriate it somewhere else. So if it were to please the committee, I would have no issue altering that north setback to be 0.8 meters to give increased visibility to that turning into the public lane.
Any further questions for the applicant?
Just through you.
I have a quick question. How about, let...
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay, alright, so I just want to clarify if the applicant is proposing to change item number three. So from 1.5 to 1.8, is that what he's proposing?
Sorry, on the public notice, it would be, it would be number one, would go from 0.3 to 0.8.
Oh, sorry, over here, right, yes. Okay.
But then through you, Mr. Chair, that the, I don't know if that would then impact the variance for number three, which planning is opposed to? And then if you're redistributing the GFA, does that mean there'll be a height issue?
That's what I...
There's also the ancillary building, sorry, the angular plane.
Through you, Madam Chair, number three wouldn't be able to be, there wouldn't be able to be any reappropriation of any FSI because we would be bound to the five meters from the original building at the front. So it would result in a reduction in area. But if this were to be approved, variance number three, which is the five-meter separation, would have to be adhered to. So we couldn't reappropriate that anywhere closer to the house because that five meters couldn't be reduced. That, if you were to approve it, would tie us to that.
Sorry, I misunderstood. I thought I heard you say that you would remove that space and shift it somewhere else.
No, no, sorry, there would be no reappropriation.
Okay. Then... Right. So you have access to the site plan now? I'm speaking to the applicant.
I do.
So can you, oh yes, we need... Right, so let's look at it together. So we are looking at this proposed two-stores laneway suite. So from 0.3, you're increasing it to 0.8.
Correct.
Members, I will caution, I'll caution members that we really ought to be looking at the application as it exists. Because if we're going to start to make modifications to the site plan, then we really should be sending out notifications to people that are impacted. And so...
Right. So are we accepting this change now or should we not?
Well, my thought would be that we should deal with the application as it is presented to us. And make our decision based on the application as it stands.
Okay.
I'd like to add a comment. Are we in committee or...
Okay, I think at this point, we can take the application into committee. Thank you, applicant. We are now in committee.
I think what's proposed of that change to variance number one is a significant improvement to what is currently before us. And so I would prefer to go with that revision to variance number one.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with that as well.
Yeah, same here. I just checked it.
I'm in agreement with that as well.
Let me ask you, how would we, this is going to affect the site plan. We don't have a revised site plan in our hands. Madam Deputy Secretary, how would we handle that?
Well, you don't tie it to the plan then. You just change the variance to, or as the applicant has asked you to, accept a revision to variance, to the setback of the residential building from there.
We'd have to exclude the site plan then from the approval.
Well, there's no recommendation that you tie it to plans, as far as I know. Planning is recommending refusal of the... and ECS just has their standard, standard recommending conditions should you approve.
Understood, okay, thank you. Mr. Solomon?
So I'd like to move a motion, um, to approve the variances as amended. Variance number one being amended to zero point eight meters from the rear north lot line. And that the approval be subject to engineering. Are, were there conditions from engineering and construction services?
Mr. Solomon, you're, you're a bit faint, please speak up a touch.
Were there conditions from engineering and construction services?
Yes.
So to make, uh, to add those conditions.
Okay, so variance number one to change to point eight, and engineering and construction service conditions to apply? Any other things to apply?
Nope, that is it.
Okay. So we do have a motion. And seconded by Mr. Knipfel. So there's a motion to approve changing variance number one to point eight meters, engineering and construction services conditions to apply. All those in favor? Those opposed would be myself. So if the motion is carried, the application is approved, with variance number one changed to point eight meters, engineering and construction conditions apply. And committee moves along to number sixteen on our agenda, One Ten Price Field. On this application we have before us, applicant's materials. There's a staff report from Heritage Preservation Services. And there is support correspondence from Jill Anderson's Ninety-Six Press Field, Price Field. So on this application, moderator. Do we have someone speaking in opposition? Uh, that's correct, Mr. Chair. We have Gloria Apostolou, the agent, who will be on the line, and then Shelley Canitz, um, from Sixty-One Mathers Field. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Please state your name.
My name is Gloria Apostolou. I'm the architect and agent for One Ten Price Field.
I'm, I'm going to ask you, Gloria, your voice is coming across quite faintly. You're going to need to speak up or get closer to your microphone. Please try again.
My name is Gloria Apostolou.
That's better.
And the applicant, great. I'm the, um, agent and architect for this application.
Thank you. Um, I will ask you to speak up, and you have five minutes to present your application to the committee.
Our proposal is to increase the rear yard landscape area by demolishing an existing two-story addition, as well as the existing garage. Uh, it's a two-car garage. We are proposing to replace it with a carport for a single car and have the other portion of that space open as a covered seating area. We are increasing our rear yard landscape area from six point five percent to twenty-one point six percent. And this is not including the seating area, only because zoning wouldn't allow it. If we were to include the seating area, we'd be much higher. It's a significant improvement over what is there. You can see the shape of the proposed rear deck is in the exact footprint of the two-story addition that we'd like to take down. So we are opening up the rear yard from the main wall of the house over to the rear property line. The area that is shown as proposed rear port is currently the two-story addition. It has the slope, that diagonal line of the existing addition, to maintain access to the carport. We are in line with our adjacent carport. And you can see the existing carport is dashed in, and it is about four feet forward of where we are. So we are reducing that garage area by half. There is no work proposed to the front of the house, but I understand Heritage is required to approve any permit application on this street, because it is listed. They are not concerned about the rear yard, uh, proposal. We've spoken with them extensively already. We also have approval from our adjacent neighbors, although it's not in writing. One neighbor is a tenant, uh, and so it's not in writing. The other neighbor is absolutely fine. There's no opposition from them. The letter of support is from an unsolicited neighbor who was pleased to see the design as an improvement to, to what is there.
Have you completed your remarks, Gloria?
I have, yes.
Thank you very much. Please stand by. Moderator? The next speaker is Shelley Canitz. Good afternoon.
Uh, hi, hi, thank you.
Yes, could you give us your name, please?
Um, I'm Shelley Canitz.
Very good. Shelley, you have five minutes to address your, uh, your comments to the committee.
I appreciate it. Um, so Sixty-One Mathers Field, uh, my property is directly to the north of One Ten Price Field. Uh, we share, uh, the entire rear lot line of the subject property. Um, so I gather there's been support from what they describe as all the adjacent neighbors. Um, however, this, uh, notice came as a total surprise to us, uh, in the back. Um, I, you know, I think that neighborhood consultation should start with, or, you know, include the direct neighbors, of which, you know, we, we are. Um, I appreciate for sure that the size of the existing garage is going to be reduced, but we just have concerns about an already, um, worrisome water management situation. And I just think it's a really good opportunity to actually, um, use permeable paving throughout. Um, the, the plan currently shows a minimum two percent slope away from the lot line. And, um, our concern is just that it won't be sufficient to manage, uh, the water that's already short on soft landscaping and therefore permeability. So, um, we presently object to variance one, um, noticing though that they are, uh, improving it. Um, but just thinking that this, given the water issue, it's a perfect time to do permeable paving throughout, um, not just the seating area, but also the carport and potentially even part of the, um, driveway. Um, and also just to note, um, right now, the applicant has a noisy construction crew back there already, you know, presently as we speak, which I'm not sure what permit that's regarding, or whether they've just, you know, decided to get a jump on this work before approval. And I would just welcome clarification from the applicant on what that work is that's currently being done, and whether they're open to, um, doing all permeable paving for the entirety of that yard that isn't green.
Thank you very much. Any questions, applicant, or panel of this speaker? I should just mention to the speaker that construction issues are not the purview of the committee of adjustment. We, we can't deal with those. But, um, your suggestion about permeable pavers is, is heard. All right then? Let's return to, oh, correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Question, go ahead.
Could, could we get clarification, um, as to what Ms. Canitz, um, means when she says permeable pavers for everything that isn't green? If, if we could get the site plan up again, I mean, if we, if we use that wording, it would mean the entire driveway and the access to the proposed new carport. Is that what she's speaking about? I, I just need clarification. Clarification.
Okay. Ms. Canitz, could you comment on that? Permeable pavers.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, so there's an area there where they have soft landscaping, which is great. There is an area where they have permeable pavers in the trellis-covered seating area, uh, which is great. But then they've decidedly said existing, you know, asphalt. And I just think it's, um, you know, they're also blowing the side, the backyard setback towards my property with the carport, which I just don't actually care about. But it's just, you know, the combination of not being approached at all. Um, there seems to be an opportunity here to address the soft landscaping issue that's just being, um, ignored. Uh, that the permeable pavers would be, um, a solution to the detrimental effects that, that exist and will continue, um, on the water management of the property. Just proposing that the new carport that's shown has permeable pavers as well as a condition.
So that was, you, you would like to see the, the actual floor of the carport constructed with permeable pavers, rather than an asphalt pad?
That's correct.
Now I understand what your suggestion is. Thank you. Mr. Knipfel, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
I think at this point then, we can return moderator to the applicant.
Uh, thank you. The permeable pavers in the carport area would not, I understand your concern is about water management. The permeable pavers.
Question if there is any, for a motion, if anyone's ready? Go ahead, Mr. Knipfel. Please go ahead, Mr. Knipfel.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think that this is, um, an elegant intervention, uh, which is clearly, um, as described by the applicant, is going to, um, in, improve the situation. Um, the removal of the, um, existing addition and its replacement with the deck, the removal of a very large, uh, garage and its replacement with an outdoor seating area and a carport, I think are all very positive moves. Um, I also, uh, listening to the applicant's concern about rainwater, I can understand that. I, I believe, as the architect has indicated, that permeable pavers in the seating area might have a measured improved effect on the, on the situation. I am inclined to agree with, with her that placing them on the floor of a carport is really not going to do very much, um, to address your concerns. Um, having, having said all that, I feel very positive about this application. And I would like to move, to move approval of approval of subject to, approval of, subject to heritage condition. It's approval of it in our agenda.
Okay, so you were, I think I have your, uh, your motion, Mr. Knipfel. There's a little bit of distortion there, but I, I believe you are moving to approve the application with heritage preservation conditions to apply. Is there a second to that motion?
That's correct.
Second to that motion, second, Mr. Solomon? Show of hands, please, all those in favor. That motion is unanimously carried, and the application is approved, subject to heritage preservation condition. Committee moves on to application. Last one for this morning's session. Number eighteen eighty-nine Drayton Avenue. We have applicant materials here. We have four photographs. Uh, we have a covering letter from Elena Lacheva, the agent. And in fact, two pieces of correspondence from her. We have support in the form of two form letters signed by owners of eighty-four and eighty-seven Drayton. And we have a forest signature petition and support from owners on Drayton at eighty-six, eighty-eight, ninety-two, and a hundred. There is opposition, correspondence from Hilda Gartland, Ninety-One Drayton Avenue, and also from Cindy and Chris Gardner at Ninety-Nine Great, Drayton. And we do appear to have speakers in opposition. Moderator? That's correct, Mr. Chair. We have David Stickney in support interest or opposition, we're not sure. And the agent is Elena Lacheva. Thank you. So we're going now to the applicant, applicant's agent. Good afternoon.
Uh, good afternoon. Actually, the presentation is going to be done by David Stickney. He's on line two.
He's part of, he's part of your team.
Sorry.
Yes.
He's not, he's not speaking, I assume he's speaking in support of the application then?
Sorry, we usually ask just one authorized agent speak. So it seems that you've got no opposition on this one. Perhaps the committee members will.
Yes, okay. So if you, uh, agent, just so you understand, because we have no registered persons speaking in opposition, we do have a couple of letters in opposition that, um, committee might note. But there's no one speaking in opposition. So that being the case, I'll ask the committee if they would like a presentation. Or whether they'd like to go directly to questions to the agent. Presentation required, committee?
No.
No, no presentations required, thank you. Please, if you have questions to direct to the agent. Let's have a look at those letters, the letters that came in, which were in opposition. Go ahead, Carl, please. Go ahead.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chairman. One of the letters of opposition, um, speaks to, um, a concern if there are windows overlooking, um, this woman's property. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, she's at Ninety-One, uh, which is a one-story dwelling to the north. And, uh, looking at the elevation drawings that I have before me, there are no windows facing her property, which would seem to address her concern. I'm just wondering if the applicant could confirm that that's correct, because that would be one of the oppositions.
App applicant? Elena, please, yes.
Yeah, uh, there are no windows. I don't know if you can hear me. There are no windows on the, no.
Do you hear you? Thank you.
Uh, can you hear me?
We do hear you, Elena, yes, we hear you clearly.
Yeah, uh, there are no windows, I, I can confirm, yeah.
Thank you. And the other letter of opposition was, was dealing with, with the depth issue.
No, I, I think the variances are minor. The, the depth is essentially an extra one point one meter in, in, uh, length. Um, I think the variances are minor, and I would move approval of the requested variances with no condition.
Motion to approve put forward by Mr. Solomon, is there a second? Second, Mr. Chang? Show of hands, please, all those in favor? Motion is carried. The application is approved. And that finishes off this morning's, this morning's, uh, agenda. Now, we are slated to begin at one thirty, but I want to give the committee a chance to have a suitable break after being on the go for over four hours. So could we post, um, a start time to the afternoon, uh, staff of, uh, shall we say, one forty-five P.M.? Does that be enough? Let's, let's say two o'clock. We'll say two o'clock, if that could be posted. And I'll ask, uh, staff and panel members to be back promptly for two P.M. to resume the afternoon session. Thank you. We're now in recess.
Anita, are you still connected?
Uh, yes, I am.
Can you hear me?